All right, we're going to call the order of the May 24th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and West Sacramento Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Val Toppenberg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with all city bargaining units, and those units are listed in the agenda. No action was taken. With that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, state law prohibits the council from taking action or having a discussion on items that are raised under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask that anyone that wishes to address the council on this or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available near the front door. Deena Kurtley is showing us all where they are. Thank you. And then turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog clip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's completed and the council's questions or the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. So if you're here on any particular agenda item, and the sooner you can get the card in, the better, but definitely by the conclusion of the staff report. We also know that for some folks, speaking in public and on television and the internet live can be anxiety ridden, and so we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls and actually not even applause or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we do have one request to speak under item 1A, and it's by Jim Pappas. We go right into it. Welcome.
Yeah, great, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, real quick on the, we're on the corner of the Capitol, and we have a mobile home park at Gopie Park on the corner of West Capitol and Walnut. And then there's also just on the side circle, there's a street called Walnut Circle. And quickly, you helped us during the recession when you were mayor again before, and we did the electric plan. It was a park that was about to close. We've since then put over a half million into the park, and a couple of neighbors on Walnut love what we've done. A couple of them are going to be here tonight. They did not show up, but they wanted to be here tonight on Walnut. It's the only street in the foreseeable distance that does not have either drainage or a sidewalk. And most of them, almost all of them, have both. We have neither. So during, in a normal rainy season, it was bad. This year, it was just a pure flood where people just dumped everything out. So at least if we could get some drainage there, it would be fabulous. Now it sticks out because you guys have done such a great job in fixing up the city. And Walnut is literally, and Walnut only south of Capitol, north of Capitol, it's all paved and drained. Even if we could just get it, you have beautiful drainage over by the Sikh temple, but it just needs some drainage just to get the water down there. So that's basically, I think it's very important.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, and the city manager's taking note as well, and the public works director's also here. Right, so then we're going to proceed to item 1B. Are there any reports or other communications from the council this evening? Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. On May 15th was a meeting of the Yellow Habitat Conservancy. We got quite a few updates. Most notably, that came out of that night was that we are on schedule for the public review draft, the NCCP draft EIS and EIR. There'll be some meetings scheduled over the next few months where they'll be taking public comment on the plan, on the EISEIR, which is a big step for the conservancy. So I think we'll have a meeting. I don't have the date in front of me, the schedule. I'm just trying to pull that up as we're talking. But we'll be hearing it here in West Sacramento, I think, a couple of times this summer. So it's a good opportunity for folks to come in and understand what exactly the plan is doing. I'm just getting the meetings now. They'll be here on June 12th, in fact, next month. So opportunities for us, the Environmental Utilities Commission, the Planning Commission, all of will be hearing around ability to comment on the EIR, EIS. So other than that, we had a few other updates, some activities regarding burrowing now, which we resolved, and are able to find new ways to bring in, help that, help that species as well as find some new uses for the agency to do some conservancy work. So it was a good meeting, and that's all I have for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor President Johannes, did you have something to say, Dean?
Well, the only item, I didn't want to take your thunder if you're going to be reporting on the public financing.
Oh, no, please.
Authority. We met earlier tonight, chaired by our mayor. We held a workshop on the enhanced infrastructure financing district financing plan, and we're getting, we were giving policy guidance tonight to recommend to city council, and that will come back to us in June.
Great, thank you. Mayor President Johannes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Age Friendly Advisory Committee met on May 16th, and we continue to work on the draft planned, AARP plan, or the Age Friendly Action Plan. And it looks like that's going to be coming back next meeting, the meeting after that. It's coming along very well. There's a number of different domains that this is going to be addressing. Outdoor spaces, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social participation, communications, and civic participation, among others. And the plan is getting down to the point where we've got each of these items, we've got draft action plans and also looking at benchmarks on how we're going to measure whether these do what they say they're going to do. So staff has done a really great job. John Robinson has done a really great job in getting this all together. Very pleased with that. And today, Yellow Housing met. We approved another round of solar panels for one of the projects. We also approved a contract with Siemens to come in and do an energy audit. And also, with the same session, New Hope Community Development Corporation met, which is a separate organization through Yellow Housing that's going to be developing an 80-unit complex apartment in Woodland. And we approved the financing and the authority to move forward with that.
Terrific, thank you. All right, then that concludes item 1B. We have no appointments to boards and commissions tonight, so we're going to proceed to item two, which is a presentation by the Urban Land Institute of Sacramento on the Riverfront Development Program. And we have a set of guests to help us through this item. I think they know, thanks to the city manager, we have the entire city budget up tonight as well, and a few other items. So we're hoping that this presentation will whet the appetite of both council and staff and others on the topic, because there's a lot more underneath all of this, and we're trying to get exposed to the work that's been happening and then proceed. So welcome. Commissioner Austin, were you going to introduce our, the item? Are you just, are you flipping the?
I'm here to support.
We're both going to present.
Terrific, welcome.
All right, can we pull that PowerPoint show up? Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for having us. Thank you, council. We're pleased to be here. And my name is Alan Folks, and I'm a volunteer with the Urban Land Institute, as is Bernadette, who I'm sure she knows, needs no introduction in this town. And we have some of the members back here in the audience who also participated in the Riverfront Program. But first and foremost, I want to thank the city for their gracious sponsorship, and also to city manager Marty Tuttle for his participation, Charlene Hamilton, planning director, and Katie Yancey, I believe, also participated. So we had some very good staff participation, and we very much appreciate that. So why did, why did we take this on? Well, this happened about a year ago in terms of ULI's sort of strategies for what we do in the upcoming year. And one of the things we said was, there's a real momentum now to start thinking about the riverfront, how we revitalize that, how we rejuvenate that. And let's take this on, because the mayor on the other side of the city has that as a priority. And we know it's been a priority in this city for a long time. So we thought this would be a good idea, as ULI, to sort of, let's look at some best practices across the country and see what others are doing, and see if there's something there to be learned. Next.
Next, all right, we'll do that.
There we go. Okay. Well, there was a plan done in 2003. I think both cities participated in that. That was a good plan. It's on a shelf. Since that's been done, it's not been sitting still. There's been a lot of investment, over a billion dollars has been pumped into the local economy, both in infrastructure removal, particularly on this side of the city, and things that are now happening on the other side as well. So it's a good time to start thinking about revitalization of both sides of the river. Next. So what we did was Google, what's the best riverfront cities in America? And when you do that, you get certain cities that just keep coming up over and over again. And so we invited four different cities to come into town and tell us what they did. And what we asked them to talk about was their context and what efforts led to their transformation. Was there an organization that was responsible and took leadership here? How were the improvements funded? What amenities did they put in place? And what has been the overall impact to the local community as a result of improving their riverfront? So we invited Chattanooga, Tennessee, Spokane, Washington, Louisville, Kentucky, and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And it was nice for once not to get San Antonio, Texas, or Portland, Oregon, right? Okay, so starting with Chattanooga, 1969, Walter Cronkite called this the dirtiest city in America. And coming from Pittsburgh, I was offended by that. I thought we were the dirtiest city in America. But anyway, it's fabulous what's happened there. They've totally transformed Chattanooga. It's a city of 175,000 people. And recently Volkswagen came in and opened up a major factory with 4,500 jobs with the express reason because of the high quality of life and beauty of the city because of its riverfront. And what they've done there is put in place a freshwater aquarium, an art museum, a children's discovery museum, and improved miles and miles of their riverfront. And they've done that all within about the last 15 years. And what's behind that has been a group called the River City Company. This is a private nonprofit organization established in 1986. They got an initial grant from the Lindhurst Foundation, which is an extension of the Coca-Cola Bottling Company that helped set up the organization. They have the power to acquire property, to implement projects, to operate, finance, maintain. So they've done a very good job then of working not only on the riverfront, but also as an extension back through the downtown. And as a result of all their improvements, about $6 billion in investment has happened since 2008. Next. Next city is Louisville, Kentucky. This city on the Ohio River has flooded many times over the years. They finally got serious about what to do about Louisville back in the 1980s and formed the Louisville Waterfront Development Corporation. And they have instituted now this fabulous Great Lawn project, which we'll see a photo of it here shortly. But it's a place now in Louisville where the whole city comes for over 200 events during the year. And what's amazing about this is the city's got miles and miles of freeways that separate the waterfront from the downtown. And they found a way to implement and creatively find ways to get people from the downtown under bridges through to this, to this amazing environment. And it's because of that now they have $1.4 billion of investment completed or underway along that waterfront. And very much like Chattanooga, a lot of that is coming now from the private sector. You know, new housing is coming into town, new retail development, lots of very interesting things. So again, a development corporation that was instituted that acts a little bit like a developer, but also is responsible to the local community. And they also have a waterfront review overlay district to make sure that plans are consistent with that vision. Okay, next. All right, Pittsburgh is a city that I just talked about. Lower left, you can see that picture is probably by 1945, 1950, and you can see what it looks like today. Amazing amount of investment, about $2.6 billion. A lot of that was in two new stadiums, one for the Steelers and one from the Pirates on the left side of their screen. But they also have invested heavily in the pathways along those rivers, and they've now instituted plans and improvements over 10 miles of riverfront. And that's all happened since 2000. They have a group there called the Riverlife Organization. Their mandate and their mission statement is to reclaim, restore, and promote Pittsburgh's riverfronts as the environmental, recreational, cultural, and economic hub for the people of that region. So it's a very good mission, and they're also tied very closely into both, not only the city staff, but also the philanthropic organizations that exist within that city, such as the Heinz Foundation. So there's a very good relationship that exists between Riverlife and the older existing corporations in the town. And then finally is Spokane. And while there, this is a city about 210,000 people, it's a little bit different that they have a parks board that implements and manages and operates and maintains, as different from the other three cities that have these nonprofit organizations. But the one thing that they do have is their city charter mandates that 8% of the city's annual expenditures be earmarked for parks and recreation, which is substantially higher than a lot of other places. And what they have underway now is very transformative. This was the site in 1974 where they had the World's Fair. They've since now gone back in, updated that, and they're putting in a new skating rink. They put in a new tramway that goes across from the downtown onto the island where a lot of the amenities are happening. And because of that, there's a lot of investments that's happening there. And the other interesting fact is that in next month, they hold this like three-on-three basketball tournament that brings in $46 million in three days of income into the city of Spokane. It's an amazing thing. It's like 14,000 games happen over three, three days. But a lot of, a lot of very interesting things from all those cities that we think is worth examining, worth looking at. So the key findings that came out of, from talking to those four cities and talking to the rest of the people who attended our workshop was that, one, these things only happen if there's an entity that wakes up every day and their sole focus is the waterfront, the riverfront. That's what they do. That's, you know, that's, that's their mandate, that's their mission, and that's what they do. So it's not just, I have another job, and I also keep an eye on the waterfront. This is, this is my life. So it's very interesting, and we didn't go into this knowing that. It kind of came out of this whole examination that all, three of the four cities actually have this, this organization. So we talked about that. We talked about where the funding sources might come from here if we had to sort of set up one of those organizations. And then finally, what would be the prioritization of programs and improvements that perhaps could take place for us along our Sacramento waterfront? So Bernadette, you want to take over?
Sure, and I'll even try clicking. Let's see how this works. So yeah, so this evening, testing, there we go. We will be talking a little bit more about the first and the third, which is the entity and also the programs. West Sacramento's done a really good job with being statewide leaders on the second, so I'm not going to get too much into the funding sources. And I also want to acknowledge that regarding the third area, I believe that our Parks Department and also the Chamber of Commerce have done a really excellent job of stimulating programs and improvements along our riverfront thus far. So looking at the why, why, why would we need an additional waterfront entity? So there's a list there that you can review, but really a key thing is that this is not about taking away or adding another layer to city functions or requirements. Instead, we see this as an opportunity to leverage what the city can't do. So a lot of the organizations that we spoke with that were this similar riverfront entity were a public-private partnership and/or they were a JPA that were granted different, different opportunities under, for example, a state resolution. What was really exciting is that the four cities provided us with copies of the resolutions that went to the state or the city entities to give them additional powers beyond ones that they already had. And I think that given our proximity and our relationship with the Capitol, that's something that we could look at exploring. And I'd be happy to share that information with you. And also, working with respected lawyer Joe Coombs, who had some really creative ideas we'd be happy to share with you as well. So talking briefly about the what, so we've talked again about the public and private attributes. So on the private side, these are some of the attributes that this organization would be able to do in addition to, most notably, private funds as well as advocacy, which we think are both really important and somewhat different than a public entity would be capable of. And the public attributes, attributes you're probably more familiar with because there's several JPAs in the area. And so we're really looking at an entity that can serve both of these. As a, as a local analogy, when Andrew and I were brainstorming what eventually became Assemble Sacramento, we talked about what is it that the government can't do, what public sector side couldn't do, that a private or in this case nonprofit entity could do? And this is sort of what we're exploring here. And then talking briefly about some of the programs, so three key things arose. Improving accessibility to the riverfront, tying both cities together, in our case, both cities, and providing high-quality spaces. So I'm going to highlight a couple of examples from the other cities, but also draw some analogies to what we've done here in West Sacramento. So for example, the Great Lawn. What was really exciting in Louisville is that you could actually come in and approach the water. As we know, we have different levels of riverfront. But I think that we are exploring creative ways of doing this. A really good example is the Dune Project. As an example of tying both cities together, I think we have some really great examples of that. For example, our bike share program as well as the plans for I-Line. But this is an example that came out of Pittsburgh of lighting the bridge, not too different from what we see at the Bay Bridge. But as you can see, you know, it really creates that placemaking as well as connects, in our case, the two cities together. And then the third example is, the third area to explore is providing high-quality space, really placemaking. And again, we have some really great examples of that. Of course, we have the barn, but as well, we have the art partnership across the river. So examples like that really offer, well, examples like this with some, a student project in Pittsburgh can really help with some of the placemaking. So I also want to highlight another kind of, you know, key idea that Kim White, who's executive director of one of these riverfront organizations, said that really, you can build all you want. What's really going to set something apart are the things that make a place special, the amenities. And I think that's a really excellent idea for us to keep in mind. We actually really liked this image because it, it looks like what the I Street Bridge could be and the communities around it. And I'll end with two sections of acknowledgement. The first is I want to acknowledge some of the key staff who worked on this, people from four different organizations in the four different cities. And if you notice, they're both public and private representatives, as well as folks from both sides of the river. And last but not least, I wanted to acknowledge some of the really great ULI volunteers. We're talking about probably over 100 hours of volunteer hours went into this multi-month process of planning. We had two two-hour sessions where we did some visioning, really honed in on which specific cities and which specific topics we wanted to explore, and we prepared our guest speakers on those areas. So I'd like to invite those of you who participated to stand. I know they're all shy. They don't want to stand, but we have a lot of representatives here, planners, architects, designers, et cetera. Thank you. You can stand as long as you want, but that's fine, too. And I also want to invite the council to reach out to ULI as an organization, reach out to our individual members. And also, if you would like, you can attend our ULI Members Meeting. We'll be going over an extended version of this presentation then and talking about what we plan to do over the next coming year, and that's going to be on June 29th. It's members only, so hopefully you are ULI members. If not, it is not too late to become ULI members. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions or feedback that you all may have.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you both for the presentation and the overview of the work you've done. I was aware of what you guys were working on and really appreciate the thought of everyone that worked on this. The riverfront is and has been sort of the canvas for, for the region, what could we do with it? And, you know, it presents challenges, but it presents many more opportunities. And I'm glad you really looked at and surveyed the other cities. I would be interested in sort of, when you do have a long one, I may follow up with you and become a member and also, so I can see the longer term one. But as you walk through, especially on the entity, and your thought about the entity, is there some consideration around, did you look at leverage points that may be in place for already that were, that were in? And secondary question, I know you had folks from the city of Sacramento involved as well, and sort of what were some thoughts that were coming out from ULI during that piece?
I'll take a stab at that one first. So yeah, I didn't want to get into too much detail this evening, but something that was very interesting was identifying that we have structures in place that are great. So just as example, we talked about the, the JPA that is responsible for the streetcar. We talked about, which was the organization? CADA. We talked about CADA, and we also talked about like Metro Chamber and some other like nonprofits. So there are some existing government entities and there are existing nonprofit entities. We did explore those in quite a bit of detail, and we recognize that there's a potential to be able to leverage some of those existing entities, bring together maybe a government and nonprofit entity. And as a third option, as we, as I kind of referenced briefly, specifically create state-approved resolutions that would allow a JPA to have both public and private opportunities where, for example, they can do public financing, but they could also receive grant funding. But it may be something that might be a better conversation offline into some of those details.
Sure.
But yeah, so hopefully that was a general.
Yeah, it does, because I know that's one of the, you know, we tell, at least some of us tended to delve into item two, which is where the funding sources are. And I know, at least on the riverfront one, we are projecting that to be a fundraising, have the ability to do that, to help fund the streetcar. But it's the challenge because you have not only just two different cities and two different counties that you're dealing with. So that's always sort of, how would you overlay that? I just wanted to see how far along you got. But it is good work, and it is, I'm glad to see the kind of imagination sort of go in terms of what you see on the riverfront. So appreciate your efforts.
Ms. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I wasn't able to attend, so I'm glad you came to us and gave us an overview. And I look forward, I look forward to learning more. I think along the lines of my colleague, Mr. Ledesma, I think it'll be really interesting if this actually, as it's moving forward, as to dealing, dealing with the different counties and different entities. I know we're doing that already with the streetcars, so there's, you know, there's models, and we're, I think we reach out a lot and we work on grants, grants together on art and other things. We've already done a lot of work. So I know the, the riverfront is so important for us and has been for many years, and we're making great progress, but it, it was great to see those images and what's possible. So thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I've had a chance to, I was actually just in Spokane yesterday, and have spent a fair amount of time in the Pittsburgh and Louisville waterfronts as well. And these are, I think there's, are some of the key lessons of those places. They, Pittsburgh being the exception, the Louisville waterfront's interesting, and the mayor of Louisville was here last, last year or the year before, and we did an innovation thing with him over at Hacker Lab, but then he biked over to West Sacramento to see our waterfront, and he actually had the same sense of that's, okay, there's a lot for him to learn from what's going on here in terms of the deployment of it. And part of it was that if you go to the Louisville water, if you go to Louisville, the river there, and you cross the river, there's very little on the other side. And this is part of the challenge of some of these places, that was where there's cross, where there are multiple jurisdictions, multiple municipalities, that they haven't done very well at figuring out how to have both river, both sides proceed. And it is an important lesson, because Pittsburgh has, but Pittsburgh is a single jurisdiction, and, and we are not. And I happen to have been on the council and was one of the prime architects of the, of that 2003 Riverfront Master Plan, which was groundbreaking for what it was, which was a recognition, it was the first time we said, oh my God, there's another city over there, and there's this river. We could do something with it. It wasn't, and we've used that as a template for action since that time, but that was what that was, that was what that was for. What we've learned, I think, since that time, though, is that there is a natural cadence to the cross river partnerships. And one of the challenges I have become very attentive to, bike share's a great example. It's the best one. Streetcar's a solid example, but many of these are, is that these, JPAs tend to move at the, at the pace of their slowest member. And we, I cannot think of a JPA that we have ever been the slowest member of. So it's one of the, one of the, one of the tactical considerations that we have to make when evaluating those sorts of organizations or alternatives is whether or not it straitjackets our ability to go and make a barn, or, you know, just, or do a riverfront extension, you know, without, without asking anybody and, or be able to, you know, provide assurances to other partners that will make their investments real. So there, I think, kind of blending the lessons from the other places with our own unique, you know, our new, our unique opportunities and lessons that we've learned here is, is an important way to build some of this, this work out. But I've always, I've always admired some of these other water fronts, and there's a lot, there is a lot to learn from them about design and about implementation. The street, we called the streetcar JPA in our regular parlance, but it's called, it's actually called the Riverfront Joint Powers Authority, and it has underneath it a nonprofit corporation that is. that has yet to be formed, that has all of the public, all the private and civic actors in it. And whether it's that, that organization or others, you know, that we have a Bike Share quasi, you know, organization that exists within Secog, at some point, our overlords at Caltrans will find a way to make us take over the bridge, and we'll have to operate that. We're building other bridges that will require an operator, that will require riverfront cooperation. So, even just on the two publics, there is the need for the sort of ongoing governmental coordination and cooperation that is underway. But I think we have to feel our way into these, and at least what I learned from 2003 was to be careful about overengineering at the front end, what the end state ought to look like, and have some guideposts about where, you know, where to go and where to not go, but also allow the actors to prove themselves to each other by their, by delivery. And I think we've done, we've done pretty well, actually, over here in terms of the project-level work and activating the riverfront, but there is so much more to do, in both for our own constituents and for people throughout the entire region, or anyone that ever visits here for more than six minutes. They all ask, from the airplane, before they've even deplaned, why is nobody doing stuff with the waterfront? It's finally happening. And I think this, you know, the work that you're doing can help both us and our sister city across the river, and all of the private sector and civic sector partners to help to accelerate that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, with that, we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is items three through 10. At the request of the city manager, we're going to continue item five, which is the contract for building division services. We'll continue that to a future meeting without objection. So, are there any other items on the consent? Any member of the council wishes to remove or ask for a question or comment? All right. Anyone else? All right, item seven is consideration to reject all bids for landscape maintenance of the city's landscape and lighting districts. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, and it's not about the issue of the error, et cetera, but it's more about, is there going to be a gap that we need to be concerned about if we wait till June and the contract expires on June 18th? Because our next council meeting, I think, is June 14th, I believe. So, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to be leaving us at not having service.
There. No, there will be no gap.
Okay.
We've already started the solicitation, actually, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, there's no further questions or comments on the consent agenda? Is there a motion? The consent agenda, minus item five, is moved by Representative Joe Hannison, and seconded by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Item 11, it's a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 17-18, confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering improvements to be made for the landscaping and lighting district number one.
Every year, staff brings to you what we call our annual proceedings prior to submitting the tax roll to the county for the next fiscal year. The 1972 Act that we have associated with the lighting and landscaping district requires that there be a public hearing before the city council consider approval of Resolution 17-18. There are no changes in the assessment from last year, in the report you see in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
And then, do we have to answer? All right, thank you. Are there questions for staff at this time? If not, then we'll open the public hearing on item 11. Don't have any requests to speak, but because it is a legal public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on item 11? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on this item. Return to the council for any further questions or comments, or for a motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, and seconded by Representative Joe Hannison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item 12 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 17-19, confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one, Rayleigh's Landing. Mr. Blumberg.
Like the previous item, this item related to Resolution 17-19 requires that a public hearing be held before the council consider approval of the resolution.
All right, any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item 12. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council. Further question or discussion or a motion?
I'll move the action.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Sandin, and seconded by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none. That motion carries. Item 13 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 17-43, increasing water sewer and refuse collection rates. Mr. Sharma.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today, we are here recommending the city council to conduct a public hearing to continue consideration of Resolution 17-43, increasing the water sewer refuse public utility rates in compliance with Proposition 218. Next slide, please. On June 20th, 2016, staff presented to council a draft water master plan and a sewer master plan report, as well as guiding principles in designing the utility rates. One example of the policy recommended in the guiding principle is the creation of a budget stabilization fund. This, the balance in this fund will mitigate any loss in operating revenues or a decrease in the reserve requirements. The complete list of principles are included in your report as attachment three. Last December, December 14th, staff presented a financial plan on the proposed water sewer and refuse fund. The financial plan was based on certain factors to ensure that the current proposed rates cover current expenditures, meet the debt service covenant requirements, have adequate funding for capital projects, and ensure that each fund is balanced and not subsidized by general revenues. The water fund, there were three scenarios for water fund, for capital projects to be financed by the rates. Due to the economic downturn in 2011, last when the rates were adopted, a number of critical capital projects were pushed out. However, they are now being included in the current rate design. Staff recommended a total of $15 million in bond proceeds to finance the capital improvement program in the next few years. A detailed list of water and sewer capital projects are included in the capital budget report that will be presented to council later this evening. The sewer fund, we presented one scenario, basically due to the minimal increase that was being proposed, and mostly that was to fund the capital improvements. The refuse fund also had one scenario that was presented, and that was based on cost of providing services from the waste hauler, and also to cover the current structural deficit and offset the current subsidy. It's important to note, refuse fund continued to operate each year in a structural deficit of about $400,000. In addition, approximately 750,000 of general revenues were used to subsidize refuse rate previously. Council approved the Proposition 218 notice to a maximum increase to the water sewer and refuse charge for a five-year period, with a requirement that each year before a rate increase taking into effect, the city council shall be provided with a financial report on each utility fund and reevaluate the rate increase. Since December 2014, staff also has been before council on end commissions to provide an overview of the master plan and its costs in relation to the proposed rates. On April 4th, 2017, staff mailed out the Proposition 218 notices to all property owners regarding the upcoming water sewer and refuse rate increase. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates the total proposed increase for each utility rate for a typical customer on a flat water rate. With water rate increase for a flatrate customer, if you look at July 2020, there's a substantial increase. It goes from $3.33 to almost $6.36. I just wanted to make a note that the city's current water meter program assumes that flatrate customers will be switched to metered rate before, by 2019. This will actually help customers manage their water costs based on usage. Beginning July of 2017, the city will also provide flatrate customers who with meters already installed, a comparable bill to illustrate the water cost based on flatrate and commodity rate. A minimum of three months of bill comparisons will be provided before a customer is transitioned to a metered rate. Looking at the sewer collection charge, very minimal increase, as I stated before, over the next five years, primarily to offset the capital improvements. The sewer treatment charge, this is just for illustration purposes, this rates are set by regional send. On refuse side, as you could notice, that there's a substantial increase in year one, and as stated before, the substantial increase in year one is due to the cost of providing services, some of it, but also most of it for, to eliminate the structural deficit, and also the subsidy of general revenues. The future refuse rates are capped at four percent, at increase of maximum of four percent. Staff recognizes that the increase may be substantial to some ratepayers, and therefore recommended to city council to adopt a low-income program to offset the increase in water and refuse rates. Also like to make a note that regional send also has a sewer lifeline credit available for sewer rates. As of date, 70 written protests regarding the increase in utility rates have been received by staff. Proposition 218 requires city council to hold a public hearing prior to taking action on proposed increases. The city published the first notice on May 10th, 2017. The government code section to adopt new public utility rate requires public notices be published 15 days before the public hearing date. Due to not meeting the legal requirement for the publication of the notice to increase the public utility rates, staff is recommending council to continue the public hearing and consideration of approval of water sewer and refuse rates to June 14, 2017. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions for Mr. Sharma or staff at this time? All right, thank you. Then we're going to open the public hearing on item 13. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, if you want to come up to the microphone and...
I want to know, how many of those letters were mailed to residents of West Sacramento?
So, if you, if you...
Okay, how many, how many of those letters went out?
If you identify yourself for the...
Oh, okay, my name's Janet Ryan, and I'm resident of West Sacramento.
Welcome.
Over in Southport. So, I want to know how many of those letters went out? Because I looked on the internet, and there's 31,000 residents in West Sacramento.
So, if you put, if you put all the questions out on the record, then we'll get all the answers after.
Oh, okay, so I want to know that. And then, what's the annual budget for this department? I want to know that, too. Is that it? And then, when do I get my answers?
Soon as we're done with the public hearing.
Okay, then that's all I have to know. Thank you.
All right, terrific. All right, anyone else? Please come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Huang Van Nguyen. I am a resident of West Sacramento in the Brideway Island neighborhood. So, my question is, with the letters to follow up with the previous question, I'm curious to know how many people have already sent the protest letters? And when those of us who have attended this meeting will have the opportunity to submit our letters to the, to the city council?
Okay.
All right.
All right, we'll get an answer. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
One quick one, then. I just want to know how it affects multifamily and mobile home parks, then, since they don't have grass, and they don't use as much water per usage, and stuff like that.
All right, so, Mr. City Attorney, we're going to continue the public hearing at the, is it appropriate to continue the hearing before or after we have the staff provide responses?
I think staff can provide responses if they've got responses today.
While the public hearing is still open?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then continue it after that.
Okay, Mr. Sharma. So, we'll get the staff answers, and then we'll continue. The recommendation for tonight is not the council vote on this item, but the public hearing will be continued again to June 14th. But if you have the answers to as many of those questions as possible, great.
Thank you. Over 14,000 letters were mailed out, and this was based on the tax roll provided by the county of Yellow with the owner of record. So, and there were some duplicate, the owners that have multiple parcels, we sent out one letter, but all the parcels were included, but over 14,000. The annual budget, annual budget for each utility fund, water fund is $12 million, sewer fund with regional send is $12 million, and refuse fund is $8 million. And so far, we have received 70 letters to date, so.
Seven...
Seventy.
Seventy, okay.
Yes. And citizens have, ratepayers can write a protest letter addressed to the city council, city clerk.
All the way up through, through the conclusion of the public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
So, at least, at least up through June 14th?
June 14th, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we're, well, then we'll continue the public hearing to June 14th? And proceed, thank you for, thank you for coming. We've got those, those answers, and there's, oh, this is, I think, the fourth or fifth or sixth meeting we've had on the topic, as well as our citizen commissions. There's lots of other background information, but our, but the official Public Works Department are available to answer other questions as well. And we look forward to the final public hearing on this item on the 14th. All right, thank you. That's going to bring us then to item 14, which is Report of Measure K and Measure V Revenue and Disbursements. Mr. Sharma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we are requesting the city council to conduct a public hearing on the annual Measure K report, receive the revenue and disbursements report, and direct staff to publish the report. This is the 14th year of Measure K presentation, Measure K and V presentation. Included in your packet is a report on the scorecard and a full report on Measure K and V revenues and disbursements. The Measure K scorecard provides that funds be allocated to programs according to council Resolution 0258, adopted in February of 2003, pursuant to the guidance as approved by the advisory Measure J. This scorecard demonstrates that staff adheres to council's direction. The scorecard is broken into two parts, base allocation and capital allocation. Base allocation is the quarter cent of the half-cent sales tax override, and funds are allocated as part of the budget process. The scorecard also demonstrates the cumulative annual funding range in the scorecard is between 25.2 million to 35 million. However, the actual appropriations to date is 36.9 million. Some categories in Measure K spending plan is spending more than their allocation, for example, the water rate subsidy, and the police and fire services. The second part of the scorecard is the quarter cent allocation to the capital portion that started in 2003 and ended in 2013. After that, the voters approved Measure U, allowed the continuation of the quarter cent sales tax override for an additional 20 years. And Measure V was also approved that provide guidance that the proceeds be used for the streetcar system and flood improvements. The expenditures in the Measure V funds include some preliminary staff costs related to our streetcar, and also a contribution of 4.5 million to the Southport Levy Improvement The second report in your packet is a Measure K and V full report. This report basically provides a detailed analysis of how funds from the sales tax proceeds were allocated and spent. We are planning to publish this report in the local newspaper, on our city website, and have a copy available at this Yellow County Library, and with our city clerk as well. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Sharma at this time? All right, thank you. Then we'll open the public hearing on item 14. We don't have any requests to speak. Just a reminder, on the public hearings, we take the requests just in, like, at any time during the, during the public hearing. For regular agenda items, we do ask that you fill out one of the yellow cards at the front door. So, if you're here for an item after, after this one, all the remaining agenda items, we ask that you fill out a yellow card and turn it in to the city clerk, because I won't be asking for just, for general, general comments in the same way. But for this item, it's the last one of the public hearings, so does anyone wish to address the council on item 14? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing, return to the council on this one. This is a very important report that we do every single year, when Measure J and K were, were first enacted, and it was the first time that the citizens of the community had made this kind of investment through a sales tax measure. And the, a central theme of Measures J and K was to be able to provide the sorts of amenities and services and infrastructure throughout the entire city, and particularly with a focus in those areas where there was not new development happening, so that all boats could rise in the community. And so, there was, there was an emphasis on, on being able to not keep up with all of the new... up with all of the new parks and new things that were happening in Southport, but, but to be able to make sure that there was some progress happening everywhere in this, so that Measure J and K was an, an effort to try to accomplish that. And that's why Measure J, you know, specifically asked about, asked voters, voters directed us to be spending the money on new parks and on expanded police and fire protections and on library services that we didn't have, in addition to maintenance of existing city streets, that, that those, that, that they were clear that it was not to be to supplant existing spending of the city, but to support the kinds of improvements that, that citizens at the time were, believed were critical. And then Measure U and V did the same thing with a particular target on streetcar and flood, and we have been, we've, all councils from the, from the beginning have played, have given a lot of fidelity to the instructions that the voters gave us in both Measures K and in, and Measure V about those uses, and this report, we publish every year in order to, to be fully transparent about how, where those dollars are, are being spent in relationship to what the promises were that were made. Now, I would say the council's resolution was the implementing resolution for Measure K, but Measure K stands alone, I mean, the, the, the instructions that the voters gave, you know, as we, the council has the right, and has, at some point will have the obligation to revisit the resolution and, and say, are there still the right allocations to achieve the objectives and the goals around new parks and expanded police and fire and all the other things that, that were allocated, that were set forth in Measure K, so it's not a permanent document, that resolution, that could never change, it's Measure K that is the guide or, the guiding, guiding force itself, so. Are there questions or comments about this item? All right. Ms. Sandin.
So this, the report will be, as it always is, published in the newsletter, and I was wondering if it's possible, I think there's a lot of information in this item, especially the, the pages of expenditures through the March twenty seventeen, if there's a possibility, without making it too complicated, if there were someone that wanted more information that went to our city website, if they could actually easily get to kind of the more detail, because I think it's rolled up nicely, but if there's a way, I know we have it in our item tonight, but it's just nice to see all of, all, all of what we do through this measure.
Yes, we can work with our communications division and hopefully have that happen.
I think, yeah, the more transparent, the more, more information we can share, people will be proud of what we've been able to accomplish with this, thank you.
Yeah, it also, I think it's also instructive for, in addition to the accountability portion, it's, you know, all of us, because the city has had some significant leaps forward, you know, we're, all, all of us and everyone in the community is constantly saying, well, why can't, why can't we just, why can't you just put a sidewalk over there, why couldn't you expand that park, or add this, or add that? You're doing all these other things, you're just spending a hundred fifty million dollars in a levy, why can't, why can't we have this also? And I think this report shows that, you know, it's an example of how, where we have been able to do improvements, neighborhood level improvements, where there's not some developer, not some gigantic grant from the federal government, it's been because of the investments that the voters have made in, in these initiatives like this, because we have, we have essentially no discretionary funds for, to be able to do anything, I mean, you know, whether it's the sidewalk or the stuff that any, but any individual resident, including any of us, wants to do in the city, we either have to strike gold with some grant, or some public-private partnership, or there has to be some modest amount of funding through initiatives like this, and you can see in this that it takes years to be able to, to deliver on some of these small amenities, so it's, I think it's helped, for those who really want to dive into, how does the city finance, how does the city finances work, and if I really want to have a new play structure in my playground, how would it happen? It can be daunting, but it, but getting, getting, being able to dig into the details, as you're saying, can be helpful to, to be an engaged, a fully engaged citizen, so. All right, Mr. Anderson.
Just a quick question on the communication of this to the public, it's, I think, you know, if we can include maybe a little more infographics on this, because I, you know, it's very, very visual when you can see that, you know, water, the, just the subsidy that this measure has been given to water rates, for example, it's a huge, huge component of the sales tax measure over the years, and then road maintenance, maintenance, public safety, those are kind of the largest chunks that have come out of this, this money, but to find a way to communicate that, you know, in a graphical form, maybe a little easier to, to digest for some folks.
Good point, all right, so is there a motion to direct staff to publish the report? That's moved and, moved by Ms. Sandin, second amendment, Mr. Johansson, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, any opposed, turned on, that motion carries, now we're in consideration of an update on Measure G, revenues and disbursements, Mr. Laurel.
Good evening, Mayor. We, much like Measure K, we like to report periodically on, on Measure G, it's a much different measure in that it's not a sales tax measure, but it is at least equally important in terms of how the city makes progress. We have, as I said, periodically reported on it, usually in the context of the CIP update, but we haven't really done so in a very comprehensive way to, to look back since it was adopted, to show you exactly where money has been spent, and it's been five years since we adopted the Community Investment Action Plan that kind of set the course for what became Measure G, so we started, if you recall, with the, with the plan, it was actually in May of two thousand twelve, that it was adopted, soon after that, the council adopted a budget policy that established the Fund one oh six, and the policy essentially stated that the money that the city receives back from redevelopment would be placed under that fund and used for what we coined at the time, the community investment projects, which meant catalytic infrastructure projects and economic development activities. And then that followed up with another recommendation out of the plan, which was to do the ballot measure, Measure G was passed by over eighty-seven percent, and the staff reported notes, in every precinct in the city, it gained support of at least eighty-four percent, and, and since then, we've been, I think, staying true to the course that the council set back in two thousand twelve with the use of the funds, so really that's what this report is intended to be, but also to inform the current decision in front of you on the CIP, we, we are presenting the more detailed version of what we're proposing for Measure G. So this graphic here is really meant to explain kind of what I just went through, when we had redevelopment, starting from eighty-seven to two thousand eleven, we, we had a total of about twenty-two point three million per year in, in annual tax increment by the time the agency was dissolved, most of that was going to debt service, but about seven million was available and pay as you go. A lot of that went to the administration of the agency and, and city support, and so when the agency was eliminated, Measure G was, was put into place, we're currently at about five point five million a year, so all the things that the agency used to fund, which I've described up there, is all the projects, but also all the, all the planning work, property acquisitions, and then, and then the general administration, Measure G has picked up the slack on that and been doing essentially what the redevelopment agency had been doing at the end, minus all the debt service, which is still funded separately through, through the process. And then, looking ahead, what we also charted out when we did the community investment plan was to do the EIFD, we had a public finance authority meeting earlier tonight, on, on the plan for that will be in place with that district in another month or so, but really what the EIFD is meant to do is to take this continuum of community investment and go forward for, really, it could go a hundred years, but at least another forty from when we bond, so we're, we're talking, the EIFD is the replacement for what used to be redevelopment in companion with Measure G, which, trying to illustrate through this graphic here, that EIFD will take care of the projects, kind of on the capital side, but there are a lot of things that it can't do, and Measure G will remain important to the city to continue to make that progress, because we'll still need to do planning work that, that leads to the infrastructure projects and the other investment, we'll still need to acquire property as we've done for thirty years, and, and we'll still need people to administer and manage all the projects, and then the, the fourth category I'd add to that is maintenance, we, I think, it's something that really got highlighted through the last ten years or so of doing major projects, the challenges that go along with maintaining those projects, we're going to need to be mindful of as we go forward, and so we kind of look to Measure G and also other sources, of course, to fill those gaps as we proceed. So you've seen this before, but this is just a graphic representation of all the projects that Measure G has funded since it was adopted, reflecting on that presentation earlier night in the riverfront, you can see what we've used Measure G for really reflects the implementation of that riverfront master plan, but also it's, it's in the areas that make sense, the, the community investment plan, Measure G, we're all about return on investment, the places that we placed money, I think, are really representative of, of projects that have resulted in private investment going forward, the bridge district is omitted here only because it's, it's a different fund, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, but you can see, really, the money has been focused on the riverfront. And in terms of how we spent the money, so these are gross figures here, so twenty-four million since two thousand twelve, or thirteen, really, when the fund got going, was allocated to Measure G, so about twenty-four million dollars. In terms of the uses of those funds, about a little over forty percent have gone to capital projects, but if you follow that down, I really want to emphasize, it's, it's not the nine point nine million, it's the amount we leveraged, we've leveraged the entire fund on a one-to-one basis through grants, the vast majority of that was for capital projects, projects like Village Parkway, the McGowan Bridge was a, a big chunk of that, but there were also a lot of smaller grants to get to all those projects that I, that I just showed you. But also on the, on the planning and land acquisition, we've done a lot of planning work in the last five years, a lot of work in, in Washington, Pioneer Bluff, Grand Gateway, other places, but that, while it doesn't translate directly to grants now, we've gotten a little bit of, of grant leverage there, that's how you, you see the funds that will, you'll get later from grants, as, as we've learned through the city's history. And then on the project management administration side, we've averaged about twenty-eight percent per year, and that may, you know, that, that may seem like a, a number that we, we'd like to minimize, but I, I just want to emphasize that if you look back to redevelopment, the days of redevelopment at the end, it was a far greater percentage that was going to administration and project management, it was, in some years, it was closer to fifty percent, so that's a number we're going to try to stick with as a target going forward, and as you'll see in a minute, how that relates to the next five years, but I think this shows that if you look at what Measure G was intended to do, it really has achieved the main point, which was to leverage private investment, leverage outside funding, and mostly be about capital projects. So in terms of what we are proposing to use Measure G for in, in the CIP for the next two years, this is a list that is both in your staff report, but also it's repeated in the CIP.
And that's where we're going to be taking it up?
In the CIP, yes, this is, this is only just for information.
So we'll get to the details then.
Right. We, we could, I could take questions about individual projects, the CIP is a big item, but I'm not going to go through all these.
This is, this is our baby, right, so we want, I, I just want, you know, for the other department directors not to get, you know, get jealous that we are spending all the time about Measure G.
Yeah, I, I, we wanted to inform the CIP discussion, so if you have specific comments or questions, or, you know, this would be the time.
All right.
But it's about seven million dollars over the next two years, and these are the projects that we've identified as, as priorities for the fund, a couple of big ones that are up here on the council agenda for this year are the first two, the I Street Bridge Debt Conversion, we don't anticipate spending two million dollars on that project in the next two years, but we want to be ready for grant opportunities, and we want to do quite a bit of planning work on that project, so we will, we will plan to use that fund to both do that work, but also to target grant funds that could leverage that, that seed money. Same goes for the Third and Sea Gateway, we have a lot of work to do, these are multiple projects within that area that will add up to what we think will be about two million dollars in the next two years, but again, that's mostly about leveraging other funding. The Washington Grand Gateway Infrastructure Project, that project, as I have highlighted before, did have some challenges in terms of property acquisition and utility relocations that added cost, and so this amount will be sufficient, we think, to finish the project, which is leveraging, I believe it's a little over four million of outside grant funding, and I, I'm not going to go through the rest, but these are all projects that the council has either seen before, has prioritized in the strategic plan, or are smaller projects that we, we think are, are worthy of this fund. So in that next five years, and again, these are gross figures, there's about thirty-five million we project, both in Measure G and in the first five years of the EIFD, I'm blending those two numbers only because they are similar, they're coming from the same area in terms of the property tax that's being generated, they can be used for very similar purposes, so for budgeting, we're putting them together, we understand that there are differences there, but it, in a simpler way of showing it, this, this is what we elected to do. So in that, about twenty-one million dollars would be targeted for capital projects, most of that, and I want to emphasize this point, the C Street Bridge, we don't know exactly what our local match share is going to be, and so I think within that twenty-one million, there's a, a large amount that would be allocated for that purpose, we hope it won't be the number we think it will be, but we want to be, again, ready to leverage the other money for that project and get it done, so, so the twenty-one million is sort of a, a high end of what we think will be necessary. We don't anticipate a, a huge amount of planning work, since we've done a lot of that in the last five years, but we do have some additional work on Pioneer Bluff, and also some of the smaller areas, like, or smaller projects like the Grand Gateway area, also the Washington specific plan update is in that budget. And then, a, as I mentioned before, administration, and the only point I want to make on this is that while it is thirty-four percent, one of the budget solutions that we're proposing, and the council has, has vetted before, is to move the planning division costs into the Measure G fund, but reimburse the Measure G fund with planning division fees. So what we're showing here assumes very conservative fee revenue estimates for the planning division, as those are higher than the three hundred thousand we budgeted, which historically they have been, that number would be reduced, so this is sort of a high-end, worst-case scenario in terms of the, the, the project management side of the fund. And then in terms of grants, we are anticipating applying for several grants, including the bridge projects, the debt conversion, and C Street Bridge, but also smaller infrastructure projects, and also parks projects, once we get the Parks Master Plan done, which is part of this budget, we anticipate on applying for grants to leverage that. So the last part of this, we included Fund four oh five, which is the Bridge District Fund, Bridge District Fund plus the Bridge District IFD, this is something you've seen recently, the, the uses for the bond funds, which is about fourteen million dollars, we're going to report last meeting, it's really streetcar and the two street extension projects, Riverfront and Grand, but also we want to look back a year and show you what has been spent out of Fund four oh five, so a few high-profile projects on there, like the barn and the Mill Street Pier, but in the next two years at least, we don't anticipate a lot of different projects coming out of four oh five, besides the three you see here. So I can take any questions at this point?
Mr. Ledeja.
I just had, just, can you go back to your, yes, to this slide, and, and you repeat for me, and, and maybe expand a little bit about the, the accounting, you were just to explain how we're going, I, I know you brought to us some, some planning costs.
Right.
Would be absorbed through G, but reimbursed, can you just go back through that with me a little?
Sure. So let me, let me back up to the problem that we, that the city has had, really, for more than a decade, the, the, planning revenues don't equal the costs historically, and in the past, the city general fund has been the source to balance that budget. Planners by nature, they aren't, they aren't necessarily billable for everything, in fact, most of what they do is not billable, when you're talking about long-range planning, a lot of the work that you see up there on, on those other charts, the Washington specific plan, to be frank, a lot of that work has been done by people who are not in the planning division for the past five years because of that exact issue, and that's something, we're, we're trying to remedy that issue first, but also just looking at the organization and saying, where does it make sense to, to, to fund this division, and, and really Measure G, because they work on Measure G projects, just like the Economic Development Department, that's the justification for it. Now, in terms of the revenue...
That's the part I want, yeah.
So in terms of the revenue, the, the, the planning division receives revenue from processing applications and entitlements, so as that revenue comes in, the money that was, is being spent out of Measure G is their home fund, if you will, that money will reimburse Measure G up to the, up to the point of, of the actual amount they're being allocated, anything above that would continue to go to Fund, I think it's Fund six fifty, but it's just a reimbursement mechanism so that we, we have a, a true sense of what that amount would be in a worst-case scenario, and then any money that comes in would just be available for capital projects or other uses, not for additional staff or anything like that.
Yeah, and I just need to hear it from you, maybe a little slower this afternoon, but I, I think one of the things that I'll, I'll, I'll ask is on the, on the time that is, that we are allocating and G absorbs, it would be helpful to even understand what's being, the nature of the product, because it, it is hard, we went through this whole exercise five years ago now, whatever it was, of understanding where, how redevelopment, the agency funded, some of that long-term planning work, that was hard to explain back then, five, six years ago, right? And, and so even as, as a point here, you, you do have projects and things we spend money on, but even our time, we've got to account for a little bit, just to say, we are spending good, good amount of time on the Washington neighborhood, which five years ago, like, you know, why wouldn't we do that? And today, five years later, oh, that made all the sense in the world. And today, five years later, oh, that made all the sense in the world, why we did that, right? And so it would be helpful, as we look back four years from now, when we look at what we spent money on in the past, that it's, the time we spent there is an important accounting rule, too. And I think that's just the principle of the thing. And I understand now kind of the dynamics of the, of the, of the, of the accounting and how you absorb it. If I may, again, a little more, Mr. Mayor, just thank you for this overview. I think the dynamic, the overview that you give on this, it's, I'm kind of looking back in your slide before this one, which had the, for the past five years, it's generated twenty-four million dollars. And we've been able to utilize that in a way that the community agreed that we were on a great path of how we used redevelopment, and we were able to continue that. And you see projects that were funded from the Village Parkway, which many people use today to get, find it easy to get up and down to their place of work, or to their doctor's office from Southport down to... And I can't even name all the projects you had there, but just the amount of projects you have, it's really startling to me to see that we've been able to leverage that little project, which, you know, you're there right from the beginning, Aaron, and a lot of the staff that backed this back then, we just, we would have known that we, we thought it was so little, but it's worth preserving, and we've been able to leverage it so much. This has been, and continue to transform our city. It's been, this is always a treat to see this project, the overview of this project, and see how we've done and where we're going. I think to see now it's at thirty-five million, and how all these capital projects and things are working on that are still on, we're still moving on, and we have the resources to do it. It's, it's really sets me back a little bit that we've been able to make this happen and keep going. So I appreciate the staff report, appreciate all the staff's work in continuing to drive this and make sure we can continue the momentum, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mayor Portemjo Henderson?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Aaron, for the work on this and the report. You know, I think this, this goes a long ways for public accountability, or accountability of us, or of the city, on doing what we're saying we're going to be doing with these funds. It's like the last agenda item, to really show that if someone votes for this type of measure, and they see the actual progress and the projects that are being used. And to see, for example, nine million or ten million of actual funds was parlayed into twenty-five million dollars worth of projects, which we've done in a lot of different areas. We've done it with, we're going to be looking at Measure E and doing the same thing with that. The, can you just briefly explain the leveraging? Because I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, I think some of this was home funds, and, you know, we've got some proposals to, or federal funds. Let's just put it, federal funds that may be in jeopardy now, and we don't really know what's coming out of the federal government. But that could impact our ability to leverage, to the extent we're using federal funds for this. But out of this leveraging, the, you know, the nine or ten to twenty-five million, can you just generally categorize how the leveraging has occurred, the sources of leveraging?
Sure. Fortunately, just going through my mental notes here, most of it has been from funding sources that are not threatened by the current budget. That would include, well, not directly anyway, that would include mostly state bond money, and then federal money that is a pass-through through SECOC. We've done very well with the SECOC programs, community design, and bike ped, and regional, local. But in terms of ones that are threatened, the Tiger program, we got money for the Broadway Bridge, which is included in that total. And also, there, a little bit of CDBG money for housing projects, no-home money. So mostly out of that total. And what I would say, just looking at the budget proposal now, I think Tiger is a big concern. CDBG obviously is also, but we're waiting to see what the infrastructure package may mean. But, but in terms of the, the funding sources that have been our go-to, which is SECOC, and state bond money as it becomes available in different forms, we've done very well there, and I would anticipate we will continue to in the riverfront areas. So hopefully, the leveraging won't be affected too much by the federal situation.
Yeah, I think just, you know, we're going to be dealing with the CFP in a little bit later tonight, but it could affect priority or positioning of these projects. We don't really know yet, because we don't really know what the federal budget's going to be. But, you know, if we have projects, obviously, there's opportunity there for leveraging. And other projects where there's no opportunity, that could affect the positioning of when these, you know, when we're going to pursue these projects or start. I mean, planning's a little bit different, because you're really not leveraging off of planning dollars. It's more, what is it, three percent or something like, or a little bit five percent of leveraging off those dollars. But it could, could affect, you know, when we pull the trigger on some of these projects, based on the level of federal funding, if they are reliant on federal funding.
Yeah, it's such a tough time with this, I mean, and dealing with the Streetcar project, and the president's budget for FY eighteen doesn't have any transit projects in it, but, as an example. But it's as though every single funding source is, has an ambiguous, ambiguous mark on it, thanks to the, to the, to OMB and to the White House. But we have to, we do have to keep working on all these things. And even, even Tiger, I think that at least one house of the Congress is strongly committed. The Senate really wants to reauthorize and fund Tiger again. So I could certainly imagine it coming back under a new name. On the other hand, the White, you know, there's at least some quarters that want to remove the deductibility of state and local, of interest on state and local bonds. So the bonding becomes a problem. And so it's, there's almost nothing that you can touch in our financing streams that, that doesn't present some level of uncertainty. But we can't freeze, so I think the point's well taken. We've got to watch carefully and keep going at the, at the same time. I did, on the, on the planning, on the, on the, on the Planning Division piece, two things. One, I sort of generally, you know, we're hawkishly watching to make sure we're not shifting, we're not cost-shifting from the general fund to voter-approved initiatives. The Measure G is a great example, I mean, around the state. When we run into other mayors and council members, I know when you run under other economic development directors, Measure G and our EIFD are universally admired. And the, and the respect that people have for the voters of this city for making such a strategic decision to create Measure G, and the foundation for the EIFD is, is a big deal. And what Mayor Portemjo Henderson said about keeping the integrity of that is really, really critical. So, and that's true across all of the voter-approved initiatives. We've had, the voters here have been extremely smart and willing to invest in things that we say we're going to do, and we have to do those things and just those things with the resources that they provide. So I just want to be, I want to be sure that we're not, we've always struggled, as you said, with, with the fact that the costs of the Planning Department exceed the fees that we're receiving. And that's for a lot of reasons. Often, it's been that we've been projecting faster growth and more permits than actually get issued, because we didn't always perfectly project every year of the recession. But it's been an ongoing problem, and maybe it's okay. Maybe it is, because there's, it's not as though there's not a public value of those other functions that the Planning Division is doing. The public is part of the, the public has an interest in the outcomes of those entitlements and permits as well. So there's, it's, you can certainly make a case for a public, you know, for a public role in the financing of it. But we've had to, we have to watch it every single year, and we have to make, you know, Charlene Hamilton, our Director of Community Development, you know, she's sweating ten months of the year, waiting for the budget, am I going to make these numbers, I'm going to make these numbers, I'm going to make these numbers? And we don't want, we don't want that, right? We don't want that level of stress about a problem that is almost insoluble for her, and for us. But at the same time, we don't want it to, I don't want it to become invisible, where the fact, you know, if there's a persistent or growing deficit between the resources that are coming in from fees that developers and others are paying, and the actual costs, I don't want it to not be front and center for us, because it's no longer a general fund issue. And then so, well, we don't have to worry about it, measure, you know, it's just, it's budget dust on the Measure G allocation, which is growing already. So I just want to be careful that we're, that we are just as attentive to the issue with the Measure G funding, funding umbrella as we have been with the, with the, with the general fund funding umbrella, so that it doesn't start to gradually eat away at Measure G, and so that we're properly recovering the costs in those fees as well, so.
And it would lead to some prioritizing of, like, that's always, I think, part of the issue, is what planning projects are we willing to, to, to invest in, right, for the long haul? And I use Washington as the, as the example, because five years ago, there's no project there, right? Five years ago, I think we were starting the Sustainable Grant Program there, right? So maybe there was some work there, and was that worth it five years later? So again, to me, that's where, I agree with you one hundred percent, Mayor, it just allows us to put a different lens on it, and that's why I wanted to be able to, what you're planning to put in there, or what's being proposed to put in there, we need to always be aware of, or at least how it is, so we can prioritize. That that's one we want to keep working on, and that's the worthy thing that, that Measure G and the spirit of it, that we know that we have to get some fifty thousand dollars worth of something planning done so that we can move forward to the next phase of the Pioneer Bluff. We know that work has, I think that was inherent in a little bit, but there has to be, we have to remain vigilant on that criteria we're putting towards it, just to the mayor's point.
Yeah, I think... That's the opportunity with that solution, is that it allows, it puts planning in a place where the prioritization of their work now has that lens on it, just like the Economic Development Department. So that doesn't really exist today. So this shift, it was intentional for that reason as well, that it, it allows a reprioritization of planning's work to make sure that it is working towards the intent of Measure G, so.
Now, by the time Measure G rolled around, our focus groups and polling and everything showed that, that the voters really didn't care when we put advisory committees and reports and audits and all of that stuff in them, because they're assumed in our overall transparency. So Measure G does not have a requirement that we publish in a newspaper record, you know, tableau-generated graphs or anything like Measure J and K does. But that doesn't mean we can't. And so I would encourage you to think about if we're, you know, if we're getting some ad space on Measure J and K, if there's a, if you could come up with a reasonable way to convey the bottom line, not, not this whole thing, on Measure, on Measure G, because it is remarkable. And it is also a specific purpose, right? It is not, it is not, it's not a fund just to make good things happen. The Measure G and the EIFD are for the purpose of making investments that will increase our capacity to do all the other great things. And sometimes we, sometimes it gets lost, oh, you got twenty-five million dollars, then how come I don't have my, you know, how come the extra stoplight at the corner of Linden, whatever, has not been installed? Well, this, this, this money is specifically for the purpose of growing the tax base and making investments in infrastructure and amenities that specifically will raise tax values so that we can have more capacity to hire more police and firefighters and after-school workers, and make those kind of investments in stoplights and everything else. And so helping, now helping the public continue to understand the kind of investment that they're making through the, whether, maybe it's just on the internet, through our website, but Measure G should, should have the same profile that J and K have.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laurel.
Thank you.
That brings us to item sixteen, which is the Budget Workshop for Fiscal Years Twenty Seventeen, Eighteen, and Eighteen, Nineteen. This is a workshop only. The budget is currently scheduled for action and adoption in June, but this is the, this is the core period when we, when we consider the substance of the budget. So our Director of Assistant CEO Manager and Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Mr. Wright?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council?
Yep, there we go. I'd just like to quickly start by thanking all of my fellow department heads. We spent about twenty-four hours locked in rooms trying to get a draft balanced budget that we could present first to our city manager for his direction and comments. And now to the council for your questions and comments and direction. So first, just a couple of principles really quick. These are fairly basic, but we operate by some simple, important principles that the current expenditures, including our debt service, are funded by our current revenues to create a balanced budget, that when we have one-time revenue or unexpected revenue, we don't put it in for ongoing expenditures. It goes into a budget stabilization fund, or is used for some one-time purpose. And then we are continuing the process and the, and the approach that we've had since really we hit the Great Recession, which is to have a budget that continues with the efficiencies that we have already put in place and continues to look for other efficiencies. It could be technology-based or otherwise, that we reevaluate all of our programs every year and make sure that those programs are working. And if there are any adjustments that we need to make, that we make those adjustments in order to absorb increased costs. Because as the council will see, unfortunately, everything we do costs more money now than it did last year, and the year before, and probably will continue in that direction. And that we look at our departments whenever there is somebody leaving or any other opportunities to see if we can do a reorganization in order to be able to more efficiently and effectively get the work done without increasing the costs. I'm too fast with my fingers. So this is just a slide to sort of show the overall city budget, about a hundred and two million dollars, and to show how the money is spent. You can see that about thirty-five million or thirty-three percent is spent on public safety. The seventeen percent in general includes a large amount of debt service money, because when we incur debt to do some of the work, we, we have to pay that debt, and so there's a large percentage of debt service. And then you can see the other various expenditures over there. Just note that on the general fund, the public safety section is seventy-six percent of the general fund. So a large percentage of the general fund goes to our public safety. See if I can be better with my finger this time. This is just showing you the next year, again, another graphic. Not any substantial changes in how we propose spending the money. Going to the general fund, I think the most important thing I want to point out is the chart on the left a little bit. If you could take a look, you can see we had the Great Recession in ten eleven, where we had a dip. We came out of that recession, I think, as everybody recognizes who's been alive, much slower than, than anybody anticipated. And it really took us almost until fifteen, sixteen before we saw any significant increase in our revenues. Probably the most important thing to note there is, since that time, our revenues have remained fairly flat. It really just has not gone up substantially. Our property taxes, we've been told by the county, who we work with on these estimates, we don't do these sitting alone, we work with the experts out there, and we talk to the county, and obviously to our Community Development Department. They are projecting a full two percent for the Prop thirteen. Prop eight properties are those properties that can go down further and also go up faster. They went down substantially, and we got some catch-up the last couple of years, but most of the catch-up is done, so we're not projecting any more than a two percent. We do believe, working with the county and community development, that there have been a number of new properties and resale of properties where the property value's gone up. So that is allowing us, as you can see from the top, to project a three percent sale, a property tax increase for the next two years. The county is actually projecting about four point five countywide. But when you look at number four under property taxes, the county's done a very good job solving most of the appeals, or resolving most of the appeals, but we still have some significant appeals of large dollar value. And, and, and obviously, in settling those appeals, some of the property value's gone down. So we're projecting conservatively a three percent property tax increase for the next two years. Sales tax, as the council knows, we've had some great success with our Economic Development Department in bringing in some new businesses, and some expanded businesses, that, that's a positive. Internet sales are not a positive or a negative, they're really more of a challenge, because it's the BOE and the county and cities are having a very hard time really getting a handle on how those sales taxes are going to be properly allocated. So we get a lot of, probably on a weekly basis, I get a note from the BOE either saying we're taking money away from you, or we're giving you more money because it was misallocated through some internet sale problem. And as the council is well aware, we've had a few major sales tax companies leave town. HD Supply moved their call center to Santee, and that was a million dollars in sales tax loss. Macy's dot com went across the river to Sac County, and that was a significant two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loss. And Safeway Vons moved their headquarters. So despite that, our property taxes, our sales taxes have grown, so we've obviously brought in a lot of companies. And that's sort of the nature of sales tax. You get companies that come in, you get companies that leave, and you hope you're, all, on the whole, you're, you're the winner. We, we're projecting a two-point-four-six, rounded up to two-five for next year, and one-point-five as there's some sense out there that there could be some slowing in the economic growth in eighteen, nineteen. Again, we don't do this by ourselves. We read the UCLA economic forecast, and we have a consultant that we work with, that this is what they do, is look at all of our businesses, and, and look at what's new, and what's leaving, and what's going on, and get our estimates. So that's where we are on our revenues. On our appropriations, as the council is well aware, in November of this year, the League of Cities contacted city manager Martin Tuttle and said, Pers is considering maybe adjusting their assumed rate of return... adjusting their assumed rate of return, and we're going to put together a committee, and Mr. Tuttle appointed me to be on the committee. They were going to do this in February, that was in November. A week later, they said, we're going to do it in two weeks, and in December, they adjusted it from seven-five down to seven. That has, you know, has a long-term impact on us. PERS had already made adjustments based upon a reduction in smoothing over fifteen years down to five, and the fact that people were living longer. The end result is that we're going to hit it with a million-dollar increase in our PERS this year and a billion-three next year, sorry, fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, and million-three in eighteen, nineteen. That was not anticipated, and the council first heard about it really in January of this year. And so, that's, obviously has an impact on our budget, and it's going to continue to go up for five years until twenty-two, twenty-three, and then it's projected to remain flat for twenty years and then go down. So, we're going to have to pay attention to the PERS costs. So, this budget in expenditures includes no increases other than increases that are step increases pursuant to a contract or adjustments in salary ranges for people who are not at the top of the range. It includes the full ARC payment. This council's been vigilant, and even during the worst part of the economy, in looking at, should we not make our full ARC payment for our obligation for retiree health? And the council has said, no, that's, we made a commitment and we need to fulfill it, and so we continue to make that full ARC payment. It has all the local thirty-nine contract adjustments in it. It has some reductions in extra help in Parks and Rec that were caused by the increase in the minimum wage. We, the minimum wage went up in January, it's going to go up the next four Januaries, so Ms. Tuttle, who runs our Parks and Rec Department, has to make adjustments in order to be able to balance her individual budget based upon the increase in the cost. They have over two-hundred-and-fifty extra-help employees that automatically have to be paid more because of the state law. And then there are some other personnel adjustments that are done due to reclassifications or reorganizations where people's work has changed. This budget includes only one new full-time position in the general fund, and it's a no-cost item. It's moving an individual from Parks and Rec who has been running our CFDs into the Parks and Rec Department from Public Works, and will be funded out of the CFDs and the LNLs. The maintenance budget also, which is different than we've had to do in the last few years, after the cuts, we've always had sort of a two-percent escalator in our O and M. This has no escalator in the O and M. All department heads have been told to absorb any increases in other areas of their O and M to stay where they are. It includes increases to utility rates, including PG and E. The largest water user in the city is the city, so we have water rates, we have to pay those water rates. So, it includes that. It includes multiple increases in the county services. County services, Yucca, the Habitat, the animal control, as I said, virtually everything we do, the costs have gone up, so this is all included. And then one thing we did, as we always try to do, we love to think we do things perfect the first time, every time, but we don't. We always find things we can tweak and fix. We reviewed all of our IT expenses, both software and hardware, and our workers' comp, and noticed that the way we were charging those to the different divisions or departments really didn't connect to who was getting the benefit or who the cost was tied to, and so we reallocated IT and some of the workers' comp. So, this is where we started when we did all that. We ended up with a projection for a twenty-thousand-dollar positive at the end of this year, a negative million-dollar forecast in seventeen, eighteen, and a negative one-point-three-million forecast for eighteen, nineteen. And that's, that was the lovely task I gave my fellow department heads when we locked ourselves in three-two-three, that we have to, that we cannot give that to the city council. So, we began to work on, how could we come up with a balanced budget? So, the first thing we did is we said, are there any vacant positions? And we had a couple vacant positions. We had a deputy fire chief position, we had a senior clerk in parking, and we asked the fire chief, could you survive for a while without the second deputy chief? And he said reluctantly, yes, I will make that work. Senior clerk in parking, we also said the same thing. Police reduced some extra-help money they didn't think that they needed to help us get to a balanced budget. We then looked at a position that we thought could be realigned in irrigation special, it really does eighty percent of his work in the CFDs, so we moved that money. We then looked at, and Councilman Desma had asked me this question, we looked at the redevelopment agent successor agency, and there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar administrative fee that we had not been claiming. Other cities had told Mr. Bloomberg, who manages that for us, that it's a pretty standard thing to charge. We wanted to make sure we weren't just supplanting one hole or creating one hole by filling another hole. That money really had been used for the first few years of the elimination redevelopment on the property acquisition plan and the administrative costs associated with shutting down the redevelopment agency. So, there's not going to be any supplanting or other holes being created by this. In talking to other cities, this is fairly standard, especially with the amount of money that is going through our RPTF, that we charge an administrative fee of two-fifty, that saves the general fund a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. We looked at the Measure K funding that was going to early learning, and with Measure E and money, and with the grants and some other funding sources, we actually had more money, once we got the grants and with the Measure E that the citizens passed, we had more money now for those programs to continue the enhanced childcare. And so, we looked at some other childcare costs that were being paid for out of the general fund but fit within the categories for Measure K, and said, okay, well, if we pay those with Measure K, that will free up some general fund money, about a hundred thousand. And then landscape and lighting, which is also, is an area where those districts, once Proposition Two-eighteen came into existence, we could not increase that, the cost without going to voters, and they didn't have an automatic escalator in. So, the general fund has been having to supplant the money that we get from the LNLs, because they're not sufficient to pay for the LNLs. And again, that fit under the appropriate cost for Measure K. We thought, well, we have actually an extra five-hundred thousand in Measure K that's not being allocated. That's after the money for streetcar and after all the other allocations, that that would be appropriate to use that money from Measure K to pay the LNL, which would free up three-hundred-and-thirty thousand from the, from the general fund. And then...
Can you, just on that, so can you, I'm not sure, maybe I'm not getting this, where, landscaping and lighting district for an existing, an existing landscaping, these landscaping and lighting districts have been in place for a while.
Correct.
So, where, which of these do they qualify as? The repaired maintenance of city streets, new parks and community facilities, library services, after-school programs, childcare and senior facilities, expanded police and fire protection, and reductions in utility bills? What is the category in which existing landscaping and lighting districts that predate Measure K fit into that funding rubric?
I guess I would, you're reading me the exact language out of that. I mean, I think the committee was looking at that we have to maintain these existing facilities, and we don't have a funding source for them, that we felt that this would be an appropriate source. It's more the spirit than probably the exact word, and again, that's, the purpose for the workshop is to present what we, what we came up with. The council may disagree with the conclusion we reached, but it, that was the conclusion of our, of our group. And then the refuge fund, the refuge franchise fees, we are, we are going to receive about seven-hundred thousand, as you'll see a little bit later, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand we're proposing. Go to the storm drain, which will help actually our road fund that has been having to pay for the storm drain, because there was not a source. Fifty thousand will go along with fifty thousand for Measure K, for a hundred thousand dollars available for assistance for low-income people on their water sewer rates, and then three-hundred thousand of this general revenue is being proposed to go to the general fund. So, if you take a look at where we were with the million dollars and the one-three, the vacant positions are two-hundred-and-eighty-five and two-ninety-two, the realigned position is seventy-one, the various alignments were five-hundred-and-fifty-five, the new revenues were three-hundred. That gave us a balanced budget of a hundred-and-sixty-eight in year one, and a negative in year two, but it's a two-year budget, so we would end with a meager three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. So, it's balanced, but on a tip. Measure E, really just Measure E, is this is really just to reconfirm with the council and the citizens that this is the proposed general spending plan for the program. The idea is to come back to the council with a more detailed proposal for the expenditure of Measure E funds to get council direction and approval, and then come back on a yearly basis, as we do with K and G, and V with a report as to how we spent the money. This has not changed from the last time you've seen this. So, we talked about community development just a second ago during the Measure G report. As you can see, we had a carryover deficit of eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand from fifteen, sixteen, from the lack of development. And I should actually clarify that a lack of big development and a lot of smaller developments that require large amounts of time but don't generate enough fees for the time being spent. And so, important work, but we ended up with a deficit. Development has been coming back, and we're at about a hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar deficit. The only way to, we can't end the year with a negative, so we have to use our one-time fund, which has one-point-two-million dollars in it, and so we're, that's a nine-hundred-thousand dollars in order to balance the CDD budget for this year, which is obviously in part why we looked for other solutions through Measure G and then the reimbursement from Public Works Engineering had a two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar deficit that was caused mostly from some unanticipated retirements and people leaving. We try to budget those items when we know people are retiring for any payoffs, but sometimes we don't get that information, and so Public Works basically charges for their work at more of a break-even, and so when those costs occur unexpectedly, there can be a deficit. So, we are also proposing using two-hundred-thousand in one-time money, which means we're basically going to be down to about a hundred thousand dollars in one-time money, so there will, there will really not be much room, despite from that three-thousand dollars in the budget, there's not much one-time money left when we're done here. As you've seen, there's a substantial reorganization proposed by the director that really is focused on eliminating or minimizing, is the correct word, reducing the number of sort of high-level managers and creating more mid- and lower-level professionals that can get the work that needs to be, get done, and also who, because they don't have as much administrative responsibility, can actually bill a higher percentage of their time. I'm pleased to report to you that through Public Works and our finance division, we have gotten our ICAP, which is our indirect cost allocation, all the way through this year approved by Caltrans, so we should be receiving, you know, full reimbursement for the work that our engineers and other people in Public Works are doing, and so we expect to have a balanced budget on a go-forward basis. Looking at some of the other proposals, again, we talked about the General Support Fund with the administrative costs recovery from this successor agency. There's a couple reorganizations proposed and some minor adjustments to salaries based upon those reorganizations. There's one new position being proposed in this division, which is a graphics technician, a position we used to have, and it's being offset by a decrease in the extra-help budget, so it's a cost-neutral item. The Community Investment Fund, Measure G is recommending and requesting one additional position, a community investment specialist, also decreasing their extra-help and professional service budget to make that cost-neutral. I think the most important thing there to point out to council is this is a division that is heavy, heavy on very, very senior experienced people, and so for succession planning purposes, it's really important that we get somebody in at a lower level and who's going to be with us for a longer period of time, just to have, get some training in before we potentially have some retirements of some very experienced people. And then the planning division personnel costs we talk about. Measure K, as the mayor's partner, we do have the median and open space, LNLs not covered by the assessments, and the childcare and active aging programs being paid for out of, with the, with the money that we have not committed in Measure K, so it's not taking money away from any other Measure K money, it's just money that has not been allocated. In the storm drain maintenance plan, there's two positions. Again, this is an enterprise fund, so the administrative analyst and a maintenance worker. The storm drain maintenance program has been funded out of the road fund, and as I think the council's aware, the road fund's been running about a five, four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit every year. So, with the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from franchise fees going to the storm drain, that's going to relieve some pressure off of the road fund and will allow us to have these positions filled. The learning ladder is eliminated to vacant preschool teacher positions and added some extra help in order to reduce their budget. Again, we talked about the Public Works reorganization. That does involve, as you saw from Exhibit, Appendix Seven, some adjustments to salary because we're having fewer people at the top, and we're combining their duties and then filling in with some engineers and other people underneath them. As the council has been aware, I think for the past couple of budgets, we have a challenge in our tree mitigation fund, where as we look at the budget for the next two years, we actually run out of money at the end of the first year, and so we have to present a balanced budget. So, the proposal is that the current position of urban forest manager be changed from a regord to a one-year. It will obviously be focused on looking to find additional revenue. This is not about the person or the position, this is about simply the funding, that there's no funding available currently for two years. Obviously, if additional funding is found, then we will come back to the council as part of our mid-year budget, but the committee felt it was important to be straightforward about the challenge that we have in that division. The road fund, again, we talked about the reorganization with the money from the franchise fees freeing up some money. We also got two-hundred-and-fifty thousand coming from the refuge fund, and then we have some new SB one money, so that's going to help the road fund. It's not going to give us huge amounts of money, but as you'll see when we get to the CIP, without the measures that the council has been talking about, we would not be able to be doing a lot of the projects we've, we are planning on being able to do. Park impact fees, the impact fees are allocated, you know, to a great extent towards the rec center lease payment, where we're getting very few, as the council has been aware, our impact fees are down significantly. There's a proposal, Aaron talked about it briefly, but that Measure G will help fund some of the master plan projects when the master plan's approved to be repaid. That will obviously have to come back to council for approval if and when we get to, well, when the master plan is done and when those projects are being funded, because that's the only funding source. This is another area that we've talked about having a huge challenge with our lack of impact fees to parks and to roads and others. And that is my presentation. All the department heads are here to answer any specific questions you might have regarding their department budgets, and I will answer anything I can.
Are there questions or discussion? Ms. Sandine?
Thank you for the presentation. It was sobering, I'd say, but I know, I know how responsible everyone, all the department heads have come to the table and have, you said, got locked in the room for twenty-four hours. You know, to me, personals, as we all know, is the largest part of our budget, and I think our excellence here in the city comes from our people, and it was clear to me in the presentation that... And it was clear to me in the presentation that we really do need to work hard on finding new revenue sources, because I think our excellence as a city will get constrained if we, if we get kind of stymied, stymied at this, at this position. So I think that that's on us to be, to be working hard on trying to diversify the streams of revenues. I did have a question that's related to kind of how we approach, I'd say, so, so you know, I spent a lot of time at the university, so we, we talk about folks that are on soft money versus folks who might, might come from, be equivalent to the general fund. I noticed that both, there were a couple of positions that are kind of in that, in that situation. So one is a tree mitigation fund and another one's, I believe it's the homeless coordinator. So I just, I didn't know if we, and it may just be my ignorance, I didn't know if we had a policy on how we approach those kinds of positions where they're kind of on, like on soft funding so that, and I don't know how many of our, of our talented staff here are in that situation. So I just kind of was curious about that and if we needed to have a policy about kind of approaching those positions.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a formal policy, but from, you know, I wear different hats, as the council is aware. So as the HR director, our policy is to look at positions and try to see, does this seem like we have a funding source that's going to be ongoing? And in which case we'll come to the council as this should be a regular FTE. And if there's a funding source that's not, that's a one-year or two-year, our recommendation to our city manager and then ultimately to the council would be, this should be a limited-term position. Sometimes limited-term positions turn into regular positions because we, we, two, two years in a row, three years in a row, we find funding sources, we go, okay, you know, it looks like we're going to be able to maintain this position. Sometimes, and this is, that this actually happened with the urban forest manager, it was a limited-term position. It came in to help us with the, with the Northwest Interceptor and the, the tree mitigation we had to do. Very good employee, we found some additional money, eventually became a regular position, has been a regular position for a while, we've had money from different sources. We've seen this money is going to run out now for a couple of years, and we've been working hard and will continue to work hard. The homeless coordinator, correct, that's another, a grant-funded position, and we're, it's going to run out in October. We're in the process of looking for what other funding sources might be out there, and, and we're aware that this is an important council priority, and so we will come back before October with some proposal for how we're going to fund that position. But the basic concept is, if it's really a limited funding, we're going to recommend a limited term. We really have to, we shouldn't, and as the council is aware, there's been a few times where, for example, the fire chief had an opportunity to get a grant, it'll last for three years, and the question that, that the council asks is, are we going to have money in three years to pay for those firefighters? And I said, I can't guarantee that. And, and, and the fire chief actually said, if you can't guarantee it, then I'm not going to ask for those positions because I don't want to lay them off in three years, unlike Chico that took the grant and just laid off 12 firefighters. So I think we try to take the conservative position of don't hire people unless we think, on a regular basis, unless we think we're going to have ongoing ability to pay for them. It's not fair to them and it's not fair to the council. So that's our, our approach from the staff standpoint.
Okay, I think for me, it might be, it just might be important for me to know a little bit more about how many staff members are kind of in that situation, because I, I just don't frankly know that. The other thing I think we'll need to be talking, and I imagine my colleagues will share their thoughts about Measure K and Measure G and kind of just grappling with, with some of, some of what's being suggested. I think I can live with it, I just, I just hearken back to the last conversation, the last item we had, and I, I think there needs to be real clarity and we need to feel comfortable with what's being suggested here.
There's only just, there's only, the only other position I know of that are limited in any sense are we have a cops grant, otherwise all the other positions, aside from extra help.
Mr. President, Johannes?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. The, yeah, the, I think I've got the same issue with Measure K, because it looks like about a third of this gap is being filled through Measure K funds, $430,000.
That's correct.
And it's just, I mean, we just got through talking about public trust and accountability and all that. You know, if we start moving funds out of an area where the voters wanted us to use these funds into some complete area, then we're going to get to a position where the state is in right now, in rating funds and, and, you know, gas tax is a good, good example, transportation to, for infrastructure in the state. I think, I think there's got to be real clarity on how, if there is going to be some kind of adjustment and Measure K money is being used, that it really is one of those categories that the voters specified. And maybe there's some other way to do it, some other place where we can look at that, that kind of shift. But it's hard for me to imagine moving Measure K money into landscape and lighting, into just to shore up those, I don't see the nexus there. And I'm sure the public is going to see the same thing. And, you know, the same thing with the transfers out of the general fund for childcare and senior active aging. You know, the combination of those two amounts is $430,000 we were proposing. So it just, it's, it's, it doesn't, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's going to fly like this, and there's, I like to look for some other ways to, if you are going to be using Measure K and maybe swapping funds, then the swap should be really identifiable Measure K priorities.
So when the budget committee started looking at this gap, obviously we had to look at where is there available money, and then do we think it's appropriate? So Measure K allocation is about 2.8 to 2.9 has been the allocation, and we're bringing in about 3.35. So we have about $450,000 that's not allocated, we're not taking anything from anything. And so we looked at the items the mayor has identified, and yes, they, they don't probably, we felt very strongly that the childcare and the active aging fit within those categories. I don't have them in front of me, but, and on the landscaping and lighting, the question simply was, okay, we have funding, it's not new, so it is, I understand, but it felt like it was connected to what Measure K was about, and we're not, we certainly are bringing it to the council in this workshop to be totally transparent with the citizens and the council, that, as the mayor said earlier, this is, it, you know, it's, it can be tweaked by the council, not by staff, and we're simply making a recommendation that this seems appropriate. The general fund was never supposed to pay for the L and L's. The L and L's were supposed to pay for themselves, and the general fund has been supporting the L and L's for many, many years now, so, and we have obviously a budget challenge that we're trying to fix. So this is, this was, it wasn't 24 hours at one time, but multiple three-hour meetings of looking at every single option, and we'll go back, if the council is, is not okay with this, we will have to go back, and that's what we'll do, and try to figure out where we're going to come up with 330,000. But in, we have not, and like I said, every department head has worked very hard to try to come up with where can we balance this budget, because we have to present a balanced budget. If that's, if this does not work, we will have to go back and sharpen our pencils, and, but I don't think there's just a swap someplace that I, that I know of. We'll, we'll put on our thinking caps, but people have fought pretty hard, and if there was another source of funding, we would have brought it to you. There are, obviously, we could, we could make, we could make cuts, and then there'll be money sitting in Measure K that's not being spent, and we'll have cuts in the general fund, which is fine, that's the council's, you know, prerogative to give us that direction, so.
Well, just one more question, I'm sorry. How big of an issue is this landscape and lighting problem? I mean, what are we talking about in terms of exposure? And is there no way to go back and, and, you know, allocate money, collect money from those districts through some reauthorization or?
You could go back under a 218 process. You'd have to, you'd have to go back to the voters. Because it, so that, we could do that. I mean, you could certainly go back and say, this is, this is, this is the L and L, and it's not covering the costs and, and, you know, make, I don't, I don't have in top my head what the adjustments would be to, you know, to the L and L's, but you could go back and, and ask the voters, that's, that is a, that is an alternative.
And it's not all L and L's, it's just certain, do we have like a percentage of these that are in this situation where we?
Yeah, just collectively. There was no escalator built into any of the L and L's, so those costs have gone up, and, and the general fund has basically had to, you know, cover the difference. And we've been able to do it and balance the budget in other ways up until this year, when we got hit with a million dollars and a million three in purse unexpectedly, and so that obviously put us in a significant hole, and, and we're looking in, in every crevice to try to, you know, to try to present a balanced budget. And so that's, that was an area that, you know, maybe it was, maybe it was too much of a stretch, but it was, it was the, you know, again, we, we spent a lot of time trying to look at every option, and obviously when you have money that's coming in that's not being spent, we looked at what it was for and tried to say, okay, what, what makes sense?
Why don't we get to that? I want to get into this real, I mean, we do have a public comment, but there is no way I'm voting for a budget that includes anything that tramples on the publicly, the voter-approved ballot issue, it is not happening. This had nothing to do, it's not in Measure K, there is no surplus money in Measure K. Measure K had an allocation based on what the sales tax revenues were in 2003, and the finance director and city manager brought to the council an allocation proposal that we adopted as part of that resolution. It's set at that figure, not because the voters said, we're approving this tax that will grow over time, we, we believe and hope in that, that that will happen because our city's going to be more prosperous, but we're approved, we're not going to allocate $5 million if all we're collecting this year is 2.8. So we're, the resolution is how to allocate that first 2.8. It was, that does not mean that the rest of the money ever collected doesn't need to comply with the provisions that were the voters approved, which were the, the specific provisions that I read, none of which had anything to do with landscaping and lighting districts. Yes, it was an unforeseen cost that we now have to bear, so was Calpers. And I, I could see somebody coming here and saying, well, it's, you know, it's public employees that are working on the Measure K programs for expanded parks and for police and fire, so the Calpers chef is, it should be eligible, right? We can draw a line there. It's not a game, this is what we, the, I signed the ballot argument on these ballot measures, went out and campaigned and told the voters, if you vote for this, this is what we're doing, this is what we're not doing. We are not, we are not using this money to supplant existing general fund purposes. It is for the purpose of expanding and adding these, these additional amenities that you, that you have demanded in this community and that you deserve in the community, and that's what they voted for. And we went, when we went back with Measure U and Measure V, they voted overwhelmingly for that, largely because we did exactly what we said we were going to do with Measure J and K. When we went with Measure G and said, hey, with one sentence, we are asking you to adopt the, you know, the most audacious tax increment proposal in the whole state with one sentence. And the voters said, sure, we're all about that at 85% rate, as Aaron said, because you've demonstrated that when you ask us to vote for something, you go ahead and do that specific thing. And then we went back with Measure E, same thing again. This is eating our seed corn for small amounts of money, eroding the public's trust and confidence in what is that we do. That, that resolution, the allocation for police and fire was 220 to $350,000 or something like that. So we're proposing in this, just as, just as this, this thing, for landscaping and lighting, which wasn't in the, which was not in Measure K, that we would allocate, we would spend more money than we voted to allocate on police and fire, which was in Measure K. That's, there's just, so there's, there's no way, I mean, I get the, I get the challenge and the problem, this is not a solution to it. This is not, this was not set up as a discretionary fund, it was not set up as a slush fund, it was not set up as a buffer fund for the, for, for all other purposes in the city, and we have to respect what we asked the voters to do. We could have gone to the voters and said, give us carte blanche, and they might have still voted for it, but that's not what we asked them. We said, will you increase your taxes for these specific purposes? Library, youth, expanded youth services, expanded parks, expanded police and fire, and fixing the roads, and that's what we have to do with these resources. So I, I know we, we got a lot of public comment, all sorts of issues, we got a big discussion, and not all my colleagues may agree with me, but for me, there's no, I will not vote for a budget that includes any of the raids of the voter-approved tax measures beyond what the purposes that were specified for them.
I'd rather hear the public testimony first.
All right, thanks. A couple of requests for public comment on this item, none of which I think have to do with the issue we were just discussing. The first is by Diana DePrado. We also have several written communications on the budget item, just that are part of it, they're part of the public record, mostly to deal with the, the urban forestry manager position as well.
And good evening to our mayor and our city council members. That is exactly what I am here to speak about tonight. I just wanted to let you guys know that I am putting my support for trees, for the Trees for Tomorrow program, sorry, I'm nervous, I haven't done this since I was in PTA, so. But more importantly, in support of Dina Kurtley, the arborist for the city of West SAC, also known as the Urban Forest Manager. It was recently brought to my attention that the budget cuts could turn her position to a limited-term position, forcing her to find more stable employment. It's my understanding that it was a permanent position, that they are just now deciding that they're going to make it a limited-term position. I'd like to start by saying that I've known Dina for many years, dating back to her time with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and have seen firsthand her knowledge and capabilities as a leader in the tree community. Dina has dedicated many years to the health and vitality of the tree population in our community, and her stewardship is unparalleled. Dina has helped me with many tree issues over the years. One in particular, my son's elementary school, Westmore Oaks, was moved to the old River City campus, and there was no shade at all. They didn't need it. As high school students, they didn't have recesses, but the kids in the elementary school, they had an asphalt to play on, a play structure, and a little patch of dirt that was filled with stickers that you could pop tires on. And Dina, oh, and I was a PTA president at the time, I took the issue to the school board, who informed me that they had no money to build a shade structure, and that it was going to have to come out of the PTA funds. We had gotten a bid that was going to cost around $25,000, so we had to go with Plan B. And I contacted Dina, who through her program donated 75 trees, but the school district was not happy with that, they needed irrigation, they did not want to have any of their people have to manually irrigate, which I understood. She went above and beyond, she put me in contact with a local landscape business who not only donated all the irrigation parts, but also installed them for free. And if you were to take a field trip to Westmore Oaks today, you would see a literal forest for the children to enjoy there. There, when we first got there, we, the very first summer, we put, oh, okay, I'm going to be really quick, she had personally helped me in.
You've got to wrap up.
Oh, okay.
Like in the last sentence or so.
Okay, so without the kind of guidance in our community, it's put in jeopardy. We need stewards, stewards such as Dina and our tree, to keep our trees healthy and safe. Without her knowledge, we run the risk of greater economic costs to the city and damage to our parks and neighborhoods, but more than that, we run the risk of losing what makes Sacramento beautiful.
Ms. DePrado, I gotta call the time.
Trees that provide shade and air. We feel blessed to have her.
But you're not, you are not alone, so I think, I'm guessing from the cards, so the message will be taken up?
I just want to say that our.
I'm going to call on Jerry Clark now.
Do not lose.
Jerry Clark, are you with us? Ah, there you are.
My name's Jerry Clark, I am a recently retired employee of the Barton General Services, formerly worked as a real estate officer. I have been a resident of Bridgeway Island for over 15 years, and being an advocate for trees, I am in contact with Dina Kurtley on a regular basis. Dina is the Urban Forest and Beautification Manager with the city of West Sacramento. As you know, I have been informed that her job is going to be ending June 30th of 2018 and converted to a limited-term position. And I was really astounded when I heard this, because she is like our go-to person out in Southport. Dina's been involved with planting over 10,000 trees, and she has a passion for the care and maintenance of the trees and the vegetation. As I said, she's our go-to person, tree contact in the city, and has always been responsive to the concerns of the public. Her level of expertise is invaluable, and I consider her to be a tremendous. Her level of expertise is invaluable, and I consider her to be a tremendous asset to the city of West Sacramento. Sacramento is known as the city of trees, and West Sacramento is a premier city. The trees in our city take a tremendous amount of care and maintenance. With the development of the Bridge District, and with development ready to explode in Southport in the near future, an abundance of new trees are going to be planted. These trees need constant oversight and attention from city staff. And the maintenance of our trees requires the expertise of a person like Dina Kurtley. I urge you to reconsider Ms. Kurtley's job in keeping it as a permanent full-time position, and appreciate this, for you to appreciate this function as a priority to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Menzer, Menzer, sorry.
Good evening. I, I'm Ken Menzer. I'm the full-time arborist, city arborist for the city of Folsom, California. And I'm actually the part-time arborist for, for Loomis. And I work as a consulting arborist and expert witness. But I've known for Dina for quite a few years. But the whole idea is it's incredible amount of specialty that's needed. And kind of as some examples, I'll explain here in a second, but I'd like to support Dina's being a prof, being a really professional urban forest manager. And many of you probably don't really realize what she does day to day. I have a position very much like hers. We take incredible amount of phone calls. We're like the PR person for the, for the city. Things that we take care of, and the people are just incredibly pleased with what we do. And I know, same thing with Dina here, getting things taken care of. There's going to be lots of, I'd say almost disgruntled people without her being around here. That either trees are a huge asset, or they can be a huge liability. And we try to change things around and make it into a giant asset. We're blessed here with incredibly fine weather. I grew up in the area close to Chicago, which has miserable weather. And so moving out to California is pretty wonderful. But it's also a curse because it gets hot, dry, and, you know, praying almost for a cloud to come over. And so we have this, this nasty weather in, in the summertime that's really hot. But the trees are like the answer to the curse. And having them in good shape, having a diverse population, picking the right clone, the cultivar, the species, the genus, is really important factor. And if you just leave it to planters, who don't have much education in trees, you're going to find out that things will change rapidly. I gave you a letter with kind of an example what took place in, in the Twin Cities area in Minnesota. And basically, they didn't understand about Dutch elm disease, even though it had been made with their awareness 30 years before it really got to the state. It had been in Ohio, and how devastating the disease. But they continued to plant the same trees, year in, year out. And these are, the elms are wonderful. So they ended by having 140 million trees planted in Minnesota. So what happened is it almost bankrupted the city of Minneapolis and St. Paul. Because basically, in, in a short amount of time, going from 100 trees dying a year to 1,000, 10,000, up to finally 192,000 trees died in one year that had to be taken out. And with that, it was a monstrous cost and a huge devastation to, not only to it looked like, but it's just to the property values in the whole city. And the problem is that, so right here in West Sacramento, we ended by having the Asian citrus silla that was found here. And this is just this, this year. But we, we're also having the Asian longhorn beetle that was found in warehouses right over by the airport. So closing, it's just, if things happen really quick, you need to realize she's a valuable asset. You can't really afford to lose her. Hope it doesn't happen. Thank you.
And finally, Jim Pappas.
Never spoke before, three times tonight, but I'll be quick again. I guess that people have already hit a lot about the urban forest manager. And I see the problems you have. You guys described it pretty well about the tree mitigation fund. And so I can come from a little different angle in terms of revenue. I don't, I was going to mention Folsom before he even came up here, but when I think of Folsom, Davis, Midtown, I spend, I think all of us do spend more money there because when we park our car, we walk around, it's much more enjoyable to be there. We'll go to the restaurants. We'll do all those things and spend more money there because it's so much time, because of the trees during the summer. And it's so much nicer. And on the West SAC level, in a private, in a private area, in the Nugget Shopping Center, I always will spend more money there than other centers because you can always park your car and walk around there without, without burning as well. So I think on a macro level, I think it's pretty, pretty important to see how, and he described it pretty well, the, from, from Folsom, how important it is on a macro level. And then on a personal level, and from, on a, on a business level, I've dealt with Dina before. She was always tough with me in business, but very fair. And at the end, she always is looking out for West Sacramento, and I think was described better than, than me before. That's all. And keep the dog parks too. They're great.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ledesma.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I think, first of all, in the comments from the public, thank you all for coming. It's, it's, it is a reminder that the budgeting process is, the enormity of what we're trying to tackle and, and deal with. Staff has brought to us a proposal. What we deal with is, there's very real repercussions in that, in impacts of that. And I certainly understand the human impact of that. So budgeting is, and, and, and issues like this, all of it weigh enormously on us. We, at least I do weigh them carefully. I know staff has worked very hard in trying to find solutions. These are not problems that the staff has created or born. It's, it, so much of what I've learned over the last six years, seven years, being on this council, is how much you don't control. No one told us that PERS was going to increase or decrease their projections and their, which would increase costs. And those things are things we don't control. And nobody in this building controls. And they're just things we have to deal with. And we don't take any one of these suggestions, for better, for worse, we agree with them or not. Every, we know everyone worked super hard to bring these to us. We may not agree with them. That's what this process is for. But it's, it's the process we have to prioritize and make sure, as a council, we represent the, what, what we think is best for West Sacramento going forward, based on promises we've made, commitments we've made, and ensuring a future for our community. And, and so I, I do understand and do thank you all for coming. And, and certainly appreciate the gravity of some of these decisions. But it's the process we have, and it's, it's the reality we have to deal with. So back to specifics on a couple of these. I'm not going to delve into the, the issues that were well articulated by the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Johannesen about the lighting and landscape districts. But I, but it is without question, sort of the, the line in the sand that's, that's been, we're questioning. But I have one simple question. We aren't, I think, or two questions. Mr. Johannesen, you bring up, what is our, kind of our liability on these things going forward? They're going to, we have it for two years. I think you have it for 3/30 this year and another 3/30 next year. Is that right?
That's correct.
And, and they still don't have escalators in them for year. This is going to be an ongoing problem.
Correct.
So it fixes it for this budget cycle. We'll deal, we'll have to deal with it again. And as you said, likelihood, more PERS issue. So we're, we're going to have to, how do we fix this going forward? I mean, I don't know if it's feasible to, or the likelihood of going back to the districts and explaining to this. But first of all, I'm not sure we're creating a whole lot of these districts going at the current rate. But we need to make sure they do get some escalator. These are the kind of problems that nobody foresaw, of course, or, or we just ignored, one of the two. But we're going to have to figure out a way to fix it. And that solution hasn't been, we're solving a budget problem, but the core problem here is these, these don't have, we don't have a way to fund these, and, and the costs are going to keep going up. So I don't know how we address that to this period. And I understand what you, what you attempted to, to do here. And it's, I'm on the side with my colleagues that just, again, on the nature of, of how, and what we've prom, have promised and what we have, or what, what we have said Measure K was to be used for. This is a hard one to, to, to justify. So I'm not sure if you have additional information that you're, that you want to bring. But it's just, it, it's my feedback and, and, and this concern that these, it, it bridges the gap for two years, even if we were allowed. We still have a problem. And we, and we have a PERS problem for the next five years because they're going to keep escalating us. So we, we still got to fix, so separately, we've, we've got to figure out a way to, to get, to get that fixed. In, in the, in the other parts of the budget, I know we talked earlier about how we even on planning costs towards G. And I'm not going to, I think we articulated in the previous one, and make sure it's articulated here. On, as we bring in projects, how we weigh the time we spend on, on these will be important for us, at least for me, to understand how, how we account for that, that time in this. I understand the predicament planning, planning staff has, is the billable hours. How, it, it's just work that has to be done. But I, I don't know what the process is for, or what the clarity is for us beyond, if it's, we have, we need to make choices around the types of projects. G, we think are going to be, the, the, the economic development, the, 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 I'm sorry, the Pioneer Bluffs type projects, the, the Village Parkway, the, those types of projects that are going, going to really change, transform neighborhoods in five years, 10 years, the ones that are worth investing in versus the projects that are sort of just everyday ones we have to work on anyway for the project that's coming next year. And, and I, I really need to understand the, kind of that process. I'm not asking for that today or by the next budget cycle. But I don't know if there's that dividing line. Because based on your budget presentation, what's in here, it says all planning projects will be go to G. And I'm not sure that's what is intended. And then will the fees recovered, will fully reimburse G for those costs? If that makes sense.
So I think the way we can, I would propose that we're going to do this is that, that we can have projects that are Measure G projects that are non-billable. We're not charging anybody, that they can track their time. And then they'll obviously have projects what they are getting paid for. And we can keep track of those. We can come back to the council. This is the direction I heard from the Measure G, that we should come back every year and show you. This is how much we spent, the planters for Measure G, 335,000. They did this many hours on these Measure G projects. They did this many hours that were billable and they got paid. And if they get paid, the, the way it works is the first 335, don't hold me to the number, but the first amount that fully pays Measure G back goes to Measure G, whatever the source of the fee is. And then anything over that goes into 650. So, so that's, that's, we could come back certainly on a yearly basis and show you. You know, here's the money that went from G.
I was going to say, it's, that, that what, what we put into either our strategic goals for the year should guide even before it gets there. So we know Pioneer Bluffs's work has to be done. We know Washington Square work has to be done. If there's opportunities to be had in, in, in those areas that are on the tops of our list, that should guide it first. And then, but if we get it after the fact, I don't, I'm not sure what good that process does it, if that makes sense. So you're already accounting for it. So I, I, I'm not going to micro manage that process here, but there, but I am really, when I see in the budget presentation that, you know, planning costs go there, and then we'll reimburse it, whatever. It just made me, it, it just doesn't feel, it's not landing on me the right way in terms of, is it what we intended Measure G to be? I did not, I, I'm not going to also say that I had no illusions that Measure, some of Measure G money would be used towards planning and towards project management. I know that work had to be done. But the way this is now structured, it just feels like we're, it feels like we're moving those costs over there and we'll, we'll pay them as those dollars come in. Whether they do or don't, I don't, I don't know. So just, it doesn't feel to me as, as clear of what that intent is. And I know we have a problem in planning. I'm not trying to minimize that at all, that, because we've been having this for, for years, right? So I, I don't have a solution for it, but that's, that's not landing on me right either.
It's, I think it's very clear to staff that we need to, we'll need to provide you with something on a regular basis to show you exactly what projects are being worked on, to get the comfort level with you and obviously the citizens, that this money that's coming from G is being used for the appropriate projects. So we could provide you with a list of projects they're working on, on a quarterly basis if you'd like. I think we'll figure out a tracking system so we can actually show that, that the money was well spent. It's our intent to spend the money as intended.
It might help, rather than just make it more and more detailed. Because I, I, I'm glad I don't work in planning. I don't like, I would not like this hourly, like now I have to add one more hourly report to do. So it may be that more reporting and more details and all that is the right thing. But I was just, given what you've heard around, you know, what some of the bright lines are in terms of what Measure G is for and what isn't for, and issues around, okay, what are the incentives that we're setting up? And what is the right top, top-level budget oversight that the manager and that we can provide? With those, you know, those kinds of guideposts, put your minds on. I mean, there's no, we don't have to figure out the details right now. And, and we certainly need to make it even more bureaucratic and more regulatory than it needs to be. And we have time to figure that out.
Agreed. I, I think directionally though, in Aaron's presentation, you had percentage of dollars were used. Even having that sort of guidance and knowing that those, those dollars were, what they were used for were for those long-term infrastructure or community investment projects were, were the ones we intended, that's helpful. And, and how we account for anything else that might go there is what I'm really, want to make sure we do.
Other, other comments on the budget? Mayor Pro Tem Johannesen?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so this is, it almost seems like it's as bad as it was when we were in the recession, kind of the, what we're looking at. Although we're not looking at layoffs at this point, where it looks like you're being able to be, you've been able to be creative. But you probably heard that we, there's certain constraints that are in place. I mean, we're not in a situation where we've got ballots, measures that have restricted funds, legally restricted funds. But we're under public trust constraints on all these Measure J and K and, and G and E, to use the money as, as we've told people we'd use. So in their situation now, because of, you know, this PERS issue, a huge issue, we've had a couple of sales tax generators that have left. And, and so now we've just kind of, kind of picked up the pieces without, without hurting the city. And one of the problems we have is, you know, the city employees, the people that helped put this together have really been, you know, suffering, I think, since the recession. And, and so what we're trying to do is, you know, find a way here that we're not, you know, keep, we need to, we need to make sure we keep the organization together and, and keep, keep the work going. And I think the, you know, residents expect that, and obviously the staff reflects that. So it, it becomes even more clear that, you know, one of the things we need to do is really kind of grow out of this. That could be a longer-term proposal. Measure G, I think, is going to be a ticket to do that. And that's one of the reasons why I think we're also nervous about you, using those funds for something other than, you know, economic growth and providing some kind of stability. So a tough decision, but I, I agree with my colleagues that this is, you know, to see what we can do to be a little creative in this and. to see what we can do to be a little creative in this and, you know, see. Looking forward to what you come up with.
Yeah, we served during the recession, during, I mean, the worst recession in American history. We went, we got through that budget and this is echoes of that. Although we had a little bit more warning in some sense because, and it wasn't a vote by the CalPERS board that caused it back then. And we had to make some severe cuts. And we, although we weren't, we didn't, we did very few or any layoffs. We had a lot of, we were closed because of all the early retirements and everything else that had to be done and reorganizations and just basic cutbacks. So we've been down that road and this is, it's extremely challenging. It's hard for, it's hard for us, I think, to understand or our employees, certainly our citizens, because in some level, it's like, you know, we're breaking ground on a $170 million levy project. And we, you know, we were almost done getting the $200 million for our streetcar project. And Third and C is booming and there's these, you know, bikes you can get for a dollar all over the place. I mean, it's, there's resources in the community and it's hard to reconcile with the fact that the daily, the work that's, the dollars that support the daily work are so ridiculously constrained and surprisingly so. And it's hard to reconcile that. But those other resources are all, in virtually every case, they're either private dollars or they're federal or state grants or they are essential to protect the health and safety of the community. The levies being a great example. We just don't have any, we don't have any choice, which is why the voters voted for Measure V and Measure U. So it's difficult psychologically for all of us, I think, in the community to deal with both being remarkably successful and making huge amounts of progress and at the same time being in a fiscal situation, not unlike other cities in the region or the state, for sure, where it's utter constraint, where we're essentially at a no, you know, a net stuck budget, where we're having to make reductions and not make any kind of improvements when we're all reading that the economy is better, employment's up, and all of that's true. But we have, we have the PERS issue, which is enormous, you know, a million and then compounding another million every five minutes for the next 10 years is a lot of money to a small city like us. So that alone and coming as a surprise, essentially as a surprise, is a major driver of this, but also the loss of the sales tax generators, the gas prices. I mean, we did well during some of the tougher times when, because we sell a lot of fuel in the city to commercial users in particular, and gas prices are down, so we're getting less there. So it's a confluence of several things that are unrelated to our success and our progress, but that are driving this in a significant way. And it's a struggle. I mean, obviously, the staff and the city manager have been struggling with this and so have we. And this budget represents the best work so far in trying to figure out how to make a bounce. And we obviously have continued work to do on that, both on dealing with the landscaping and lighting issues, I think, from my perspective at least. And it sounds generally with the council as well. But I mean, I think that, you know, the issue around the urban forestry manager, the homeless coordinator, I mean, it would be very difficult to not have a homeless coordinator after the voters just said, in fact, we want to expand investment in homelessness because you, City Council, you've told us it's a top priority for you. And yes, we agree, so we're going to make some investments to add resources to homelessness. So I mean, I think we have some areas that we need to keep focusing on between now and the final adoption of the budget and see where we may have possibilities. But we can't, we can't fool, you know, ourselves or the community that we're going to find a necessary answer to everything. And there will be more, there may be more painful options that are before us before then. But I also agree, you know, very much with my colleagues and what Councilmember Sandy let off with, which is that the reason why the levies in Third and C and all these other projects, all these other things that even during the tough times, the community, the residents and the businesses in our community are like, well, it's tough and, you know, we don't have, the pool is open less hours and, you know, things are tough, but I can see hope. I can see things moving and things are going to get better. And the kinds of things that Mr. Johansson said in terms of those investment paying off longer term, those only happen because we, of the people of the organization. I mean, it's working with all of our partners and investors and residents and others in order to drive that, but it's because we have outstanding team. And we, I think we all, we all did expect. I know a year ago, we were expecting that this was going to be a year when we'd be able to make more extraordinary investments in our own employees. And this budget is not largely thanks to PERS, but those other factors as well, has caused that to not be the case in this balanced budget that we're required to adopt. So I know for, I know for all of us, this is, it's a priority. And on the bright side, I think on the horizon, there are options for generating additional revenues that aren't taxes or fees or whatever, but are our economic growth and activity in our city. And as always, we have a thousand prospects of people who want to do business here. And if we can leverage the right sum of them, you know, a handful of them, then we may have additional resources. And I think we want to be focusing both the council and I know the leadership team and the city staff who are already working on these projects, but to do our best to try to make those work and make those revenues come into reality so that we can, you know, make real the priority that we all share for investing in the workforce and in the team that's really been going on all pistons and delivering tremendous results for our community.
So I think we've got what we need from the workshop. I just want to clarify one thing. I think it's very clear, the landscaping and lighting, we will have to go and figure out a different way of trying to balance the budget there. The $100,000 on the childcare and the active aging, was that also something that you felt did not fit under Measure K as a council? So should we be looking for another $100,000 or was that something that seemed to fit? I've looked at Measure K and I don't want to in any way mislead the council. I think we looked at Measure K and thought that community facilities might fit under L and L. Looking at it now as you read it where it says new, probably in our, just reading this over, we didn't focus on it, says new parks and it, community facilities. And that obviously means new community facilities. So that was what we were thinking. The childcare and the senior facilities was where we were looking at moving some of the childcare and the active aging money that would free up some general fund money. But I want to, if that's not something acceptable, we need to know that. So when we go back, we take that out and start, look for $430,000 instead of $330,000.
Can I just ask you one technical question? So are you thinking that those dollars would come from essentially an allocation of, an ongoing allocation of the Measure K, Measure JK funds? Or would that be coming from the $900,000 of unappropriate?
The way this would work is there's measure, there was Measure K funds that were going to ELS that don't have to go to the early learning anymore. So we had an extra $100,000 that was now being spent by Measure K and the grants, I'm sorry, by Measure E and the grants. And so we thought, oh, well, what other things could it be spent on that fit within Measure K? And we looked at some of the childcare costs at the rec center and some of the aging, active aging programs at the community center that right now the general fund is having to pay for. That we thought, well, if Measure K could pay for it, that'll free up $100,000. So I just wanted to, it was, you know, it's not, it's not clean. But so we brought it to the council for this purpose, for the workshop, for you to say, nope, that's not good enough, doesn't pass the smell test, or it's okay.
For me, it's, I don't want to be opening a barn door, but this is one I think it's reasonable to have on the table. We didn't have the rec center at the time of the adoption of Measure J and K nor the senior center in its current form. And we are, we are expanding our overall program on aging, obviously, as a result of the work that Mayor Protemt Johansson and Councilmember Sandy are leading. So I think they're, I'm not trying to like debate the number of angels on a pin and a needle.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Well, thank you for the direction.
Thank you. Thanks to the committee. All right, item 17 is a workshop on the Bino capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2017-18 and fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal, a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019-20 through fiscal year 2021-22.
All right. Again, thank you to all of the department heads and their management staff and their day-to-day staff who probably did most of the work here. You have to put up with me for a little bit longer. So again, on the CIP budget, we have some principles, which is that we look for, to follow, make sure we follow the city's budget policies and practices recommended by the GFOA, multi-year capital planning to be effective in our management of our capital assets. Linking, we particularly look to the master plan and obviously to the council priority agenda and looking at which projects to work on. We develop a plan that focuses on our needs, options. These are greater than $5,000, not things that reoccur regularly and that result in the acquisition of a fixed asset for a useful life more than a year. So that's what goes into the capital project. We have been extremely successful, as we've talked about tonight, over the history. Looking at the last eight years, we've managed to leverage $50.4 million in grants and use other financing debt and then obviously impact fees and special taxes to do the projects. And you can see that $132 million in projects over the last eight years, which is huge for a city this size. When you look at the sources for 1718, I think what jumps out at you is that teeny little thing on the second column, which is that the impact fees have really just dissipated. And thank goodness, we have our Measure G and Measure U and V, I'm sorry, V and others that we get to use for matching funds to be able to match those grants. Otherwise, the lack of impact fees would have more of a negative impact. They're impacting certain funds more than others at this point. So our revenues projected, we continue to get grants. So you can see that's $11.5 million that we have right now for the two-year budget, which is 5.75 a year. So we're not, it was averaging 6.3. So, you know, we're in pretty good shape as far as continuing to get grant money for the Grand Gateway, Sycamore Trail, Phase Two, Riverfront Street, Road Rehab, Broadway Bridge. As the council is aware, we have, we were talking about bonding for CFD 27 to do the streetcar and, oh, sorry, bonding for V for the streetcar and CFD 27 for the extension of the streetcar and a couple of road projects. And then the utility fund and the sewer fund, which will be back on June 14th. If the rates are adopted, they include $15 million and $10 million for capital projects. So that's, those are the capital projects for the next, the areas. Whoop, sorry. Too fast with my fingers here again. There we go. So the total requests by the different measures is $43 million in year one and then $13 million in year two. They're front-loaded in part because of some of the grants that we're receiving and they're lower on the second year because we're going to be pretty busy with the projects that are being funded in the first year, which are not going to get done in the first year. So you can look and see the Measure E fund, the road fund, general facilities fund, service CFDs, bridge district, Measure G, that's the 6.9 that Aaron went over with you in detail, the sewer, water and other revenue funds. So and the bridge district, you can see there's a, there's a large amount there. That's obviously from the $14 million for the riverfront, streetcar extension and the three street projects that we talked about. So here are the major projects that are being proposed to be in this two-year budget. Measure G, the I Street Bridge, Third Student C in Washington that Aaron talked about. Measure E has some road rehabilitation projects that come out of the road portion of Measure E. As we know, we're also getting some SB 1. And now that we believe we've solved sort of the road fund problem where the money was going to go away, in the next couple of years, we have some neighborhood road rehabilitation projects we're projecting, are proposing. Facilities fund is some ADA improvements at Memorial Park. CFDs have various rehab and replacement capital projects within each one of the CFDs. Bridge District, again, that we talked about, that $14 million, the streetcar, the riverfront extension, the grand extension, and then the sewer and the water projects that are part of the master plans. Council has always asked that we sort of highlight the projects that are not being funded that we think the council would want to at least be aware of so they could give us direction if they thought they should move them forward. So these are just examples. You have the full list as part of the package. But obviously, the Sycamore Trail, Phases Two and Three, we're still looking for a grant. We have money in Measure G to match that grant when we, we didn't get the grant last time we looked for it. So we'll continue looking for that. It could move up if we get a grant. We'll obviously come back to the council and move this up. Measure E, there's the map pilot and the traffic detection that simply we've already, we've fully allocated, there's other projects, I'm sorry, that we've put in the first two years that we're proposing to put in the first two years for the Measure E. There's some road projects that we simply don't have sufficient money in the road fund or impact fees coming in. So some residential traffic calming and the Park and Stone intersection improvement. And then, I'm sorry, that's not, I'm incorrect in what I said right there. That's not because of the impact fees. Oh, yeah, that's right. That's the gasoline tax. Yes, thank you, in the dish. That was, the mayor talked about, that's the lack of the gasoline tax. The traffic improvement is where the impact fees have come in and hit us on the lindens and the stone widening. And then some of the park fund projects, as we've talked about, the park fund literally has very few funds left other than funds for the debt payment for the rec center. So Bright Park play structure, we are doing, as the council knows, Bright Park, Phase Two. But this is part of Phase Three. There's a Phase Three and Phase Four that currently we don't have funding. Again, if we get some grant funding, obviously, we will look for other funds to match those grants and come back to the council at that time. We know it's a priority project, but we don't have the funds right now. General facilities fund, we've had, you've had some presentations on the courtyard and obviously discussion of the police station. We do not have those in the two-year because we don't have funding. That doesn't mean these are not priority projects and we're not looking to find funding or be creative because they're important. Just we don't have the funding sorted out yet and we will continue to work on those. And then there's some water projects that are identified in the master plan that we're not putting in the two-year proposal. And that's my presentation on the CIP. You have a detailed attachment with all of the projects by fund and then in the two-year and in the three to five-year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor Protemt Johansson?
Just a quick preliminary question. Has there been any attempt to identify the equities of the investments throughout town with these different projects? For example, you know, one of the items off the list is the Bright Park play structure. Because when the CIP is approved, we want to make sure that, you know, the whole entire city's is the beneficiary of whatever we're going to approve. And there's not really, it doesn't look like it's really been specified here or identified to help us with that or help me with that.
Yeah, we, that's, we will certainly make an effort to maybe show a map of where the various programs are when we bring the final CIP back. It's taken into consideration, certainly discussed at the committee level, but I think our number one priority is trying to leverage our money. That's sort of been our, the direction from council. And our modus operandi as a city is trying to look at taking the money we have and where we can take $2 million and get $5 million and make a $7 million project. You know, we certainly, that's one of the top priorities from staff's standpoint based upon council direction. If, we will try to do that.
Okay, thanks. On that, I'd actually, I have a proposal that's just come to mind, which is, I would, I'd like to suggest that we program $80,000 out of the, out of the Measure K fund balance, which was specifically for expanded park facilities and with a particular emphasis on those areas not in, not covered by development impact fees.
What was the dollar amount?
$80,000 that is, that was, couldn't be funded for the Bright Place structure.
Got it.
Out of the, because we don't have, we have zero, essentially zero balance in the park fund.
Okay, perfect.
That we fund that project out of the $900,000 in the Measure K fund. That's right in the, that's right in the sweet spot.
Yep, sounds good.
The, I had a couple of questions. One, I Street Bridge deck conversion, we're in this, this has a potential to being a really interesting and amazing project and/or has the potential to be a pretty darn good one and a solid, like, government-built one. And, but there's, those are potentially two paths, right? So the, I mean, the high line in New York has been kind of a touch point for a lot of us in thinking about this. You know, I think in New York City would say they could not have built that project as a city project. That the nature of what it is and the focus on art and making it amazing and linking it directly to development, that sort of thing, would not have been possible as a principally public. as a principally publicly funded project. And also because becoming a publicly project, funded project means a bunch of committees and procedures and rules that make sure that nothing goes bad and so everything can be, should just be good but not great. And so I just, I, I, I want to, I want to at least raise a flag on this one, that, that we, while we, we should keep making every bit of progress that we can and there's stuff that we, we ultimately will have to do no matter what, the public sector, in order to make it viable in its fundamentals, that we also not create the sense among folks who are excited about helping on, you know, raising money to, like, the Tower Bridge lighting was, had originally done it in a bigger way, not, not, like, suck all the oxygen out of the room by, by making this into a multimillion-dollar government project before the civic sector has had a chance to wane and say, hey, we want to do something that you would never think, that Public Works and Caltrans would not jointly ever think of. It's hard to imagine, but we want to do something spectacular. And so it's not, I'm glad, it's good to see it in here and we should have it in there, but it's also, I also don't think it's a mandate that you go out and spend every penny of it, because it should be, it really should be about the maximum extent possible activating the civic sector, because this, this project has as much about placemaking as it is about the, you know, just moving people from point A to point B. Then second, on the Measure E, the Measure E Fund, I wanted to focus a little bit more on as well. So you mentioned this and I just think this, this particular lens about leverage, that we, we were very explicit with our, with ourselves and then with the public, that this, this is, none of these pots are enough, are enough money to do much of anything. And if we try to spend all of the money on doing the thing, then we won't get very far. And so the only, the only way this will actually have its intended results is if we, the money that we have for broadband access or the money for homelessness or whatever, each of those dollars is leveraging a lot of dollars from somewhere else. And so it would be helpful when this comes back to sort of identify where, how we're thinking these projects are going to do that. And particularly in the trail, at least that's the one that popped out at me. One, it looked like there were like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of projects that you would categorize in the trail portion of Measure E, but the budget for trail and Measure E is not that, is not that big, I don't think. But anyway, reconciling that, but it's, that, the idea there was to create, like, it was the regional trail system in addition to, you know, the, making the rest of the trail stuff work and setting the table for the cost of maintaining the regional trail system that we're going to be, that we're trying to build through the South Port Levy project and everything else. And so if we, it has, it has, it has the feel and the potential, like, it's, it's, it's starting to be a replacement where the, where the parks fund couldn't fund something because it doesn't have any money or where the road fund couldn't fund a bike project because we didn't have any, any money in that fund. And, you know, they're all, they're all, these are all legal allocations, I think. But I think it would just be helpful to understand, what's the strategy here with these allocations? And does it add up to the, to the actual allocation that's in there for trails? Similarly, the smart city mobility and internet components of Measure E, I think that in the narrative, you note that the, that smart, smart city has an allocation in the operating budget, which I, I know a portion of that is for the data, for data and a portion of this for the deputy city manager that leads the smart city work, right?
Well, we haven't actually put any positions in Measure E at this point.
Yeah, if I may, we were going to come back.
We were going to come back.
In June with a workshop on E to flush that out and get direction. I think the intent here was just to reconfirm the council's allocation for those different areas, but in terms of breaking it out, that's not our intent. That was to come back late in June.
Okay, because, yeah, the last item, in the operating budget item, we reaffirmed the, the program, the element-by-element allocations. But this, this, this one, it, I think it only includes one item on the smart city piece.
I think we plugged it all together.
Correctly, so yes, it, so it only has the ITS master plan Phase Two, which, that's a, it's a, I get it, it's a stretch. And if CACOG is leading that effort and, you know, there, there, it pains to say that it's actually smart city work as opposed to regular old ITS work over again. So it's a stretch, but it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's not a break, it's just a stretch. But we, but that, you know, that, that, that portion of Measure E was, you know, smart city. It was, you know, new approaches to mobility and if we might, if we might want to try a new partnership with Uber and Lyft or do this, you know, the, the riverfront shuttle or, you know, other, other approaches to, to new, new ways of dealing with transit. It's also the area that we're going to deal with broadband access and that sort of thing. And so we need to keep the, keep space in this and even on both the capital and the operating side to do those things. So the smart city stuff can't be completely consumed by ITS infrastructure and one position because it was, it included, I mean, we were referring to it in shorthand, but it did include the alternative mobility provisions and the broadband internet provisions. So it's not a proposed change here and there's nothing wrong with what's in, what's in this element, but don't, let's not lose sight of, of those components of what the smart city piece was, was expressly, expressly included in, in the ballot measure and in the campaign materials and in the ballot, in the ballot argument as well. That's it. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In fact, your comments about Measure E were, the notes I had written to myself when I was reviewing this item, and I kept, I wrote on the, on the side, "Match, match, match." I was trying to, I was trying to figure out which ones we could use to leverage. So I think, I think the suggestion to add that in when it's, when it makes sense, when this comes back would be really helpful. I also just, just personally, I wasn't sure if the pavement management system update should be in the road fund or landing in Measure E. So I, I can kind of understand since, since we're trying to kind of do the, that's what we promised voters, is that we were going to get on top of that and there was, there were not other funds for that. But I didn't know if the planning piece should, should perhaps lie in the road fund and then the actual doing piece, fixing up, would be in the Measure E. So that was just something that occurred to me. I don't know if my colleagues agree, but that was, when I read this, it popped out at me.
We'll take a look at that, see if we have enough money in the road fund to do it that way. I don't know off the top of my head exactly where we are.
I don't know how effective this will be, but I was thinking on this issue and on the one we were just talking about in terms of the ITS master plan, those sorts of elements, because the pavement, the pavement management system we have to update, I don't know, every sixteen minutes or whatever. It seems like Denex is never happy with that system. But, you know, it, it may be that we, we just have to bite the bullet on some of these, just like on the last item that we did, that at least, you know, we were having to think about it on the, on the, on the, the programs that you mentioned on Measure K. But we can also flag them as, this is an extraordinary budget year, we're doing this. What I don't want to see is like every three years, a pavement management system update for a hundred K is in the budget again, in Measure E again and again and again and again and again. So that we're, there are things that we need to do now that are extraordinary, that are a stretch but not a break, but that we, you should be writing a note to our, to the future, that this is, this is, this is an extraordinary action and it's not intended and it's not authorization to make this a regular part of the, of these, of these funding sources.
Yeah. Okay. I put a note to myself.
Thank you. Just had one kind of question, actually, and regarding the same issue, which is around road pavement and the road fund, which is, and some of it's, we do care for in E and that is what we promised. The question is, how do we deal with SB one as it, as it gets implemented? We're going to have and pay the same, another influx of funds. And I know we have plenty of road work to do. I think the city manager made me clear on that a couple of meetings ago, but, but we have some of these costs here. When will we start seeing that and how can that help care for some of this? What's the strategy around those, that piece as well?
He has a button, so he can answer the question.
So the, the SB one will be implemented in phases. So the first year, we'll be getting like three hundred thousand dollars and the second year, we'll be getting like nine hundred thousand dollars and then eventually we'll get like one point two million dollars a year. So our plan is when we do the pavement management system update, we'll come up with a plan, a five-year or a seven-year plan that'll identify projects throughout the city and then put a cost to it. And then we'll identify the funding sources. Part of that will be Measure E, part of that will be SB one and any other road funds that we have access to. So we'll put all that in, into a plan, a multi-year plan, and it'll bring that to a council for approval.
Well, and I think we're, thank you. And I think part of what I'm getting at is we should consider where this stuff is parked from a funding perspective. So if it's in E, because we did have money allocated for that, we planned for money to go for that, what type of projects should be funded by E versus which ones are planned by SB one money or which ones are planned by regular road, right? So what's, that's what I'm after, is so that when we see this in three years, E will have, I, I couldn't tell you what, what projects might be in E that really strike towards the sphere of what E was, which is help, help improve new projects that need, in older neighborhoods that don't have impact fees, whatever. But we, we need some sort of guidance on that, on that piece so that it's clear.
So if I understand this correctly, SB one will be a part of the road fund. However, every year, we are required to produce a report to the state on what we did with the SB one money. So that report will clearly identify, here is how much we got and here is where we spent it. And it'll be a part of the road fund, right? We are not creating a separate account for that.
Okay. And it's for the local, local, regional roads. So we'll, we'll, we'll use every penny of SB one first for all, for those projects that are eligible for that and then projects that are not eligible, that's, those are the ones that I would recommend we'd be looking for Measure E and, and the rec or road fund. Because we want to maximize our ability to use as much of SB one as we can.
Okay. Any other feedback or guidance? All right. Thank you, thanks so much, Phil and the whole, city manager, the whole team. It's, there's a, there's a very, the capital budget is not, I mean, it always has its issues. The road fund never has any money and neither does the parks fund, but it's definitely a more, I mean, this is a more rosy scenario and allows us to make some key investments. And it's, well, it's easily understood and comprehended and appreciate all the work that's been done. So, thank you. All right, that brings us to item eighteen, which is consideration of amendment to residential development timing on Lot 504 in the Rivers Phase Two project. Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. We're back before you this evening on Lot 504 of the Rivers subdivision, which is in the northeast area of the city. It was last before you in two thousand fourteen, when they asked if five acres of the twelve acre lot could be developed as residential. And at that time, a timing restriction was placed on the residential. The exact language is in your agenda report, which indicates that the remaining seven acres would have a school on it and it would be open for classes before a final map could be recorded and any residential construction could begin. So since that time, the developer has been advancing several items that were outstanding. And we also uncovered with them a couple of items. And so the final map is now at a stage that's about ready to come to you for approval as well as the subdivision improvement plan, subdivision improvement agreement. The items that we've discovered along with the developer are some soil contamination on Lot 504. And they have been advancing their remediation plan with the State Department of Toxic Substances. And that's also in your agenda report. We also learned through water modeling that the water tank would need to be constructed and operational prior to a school being able to be opened. So those items culminating as well as their advancements with working, trying to attract schools, they've had three different ones since that time actively working and engaging even with our city staff. And so we felt when they came to us again with the request to revisit that residential timing restriction, that all those things kind of were resulting in that we should bring it to you to look at. And staff is supportive of their request at this time. And so the recommended action reflects that we support an adjustment to the timing restriction. The developer is present tonight, the entire development team from the West Sac Rivers LLC, also known as Richland. And Mr. Clifton Taylor has a presentation regarding his request. And I believe there are also representatives from the school organization, John Adams Academy. So with that, I will conclude because it is late and I'll return it back to the council.
Thank you. Wait, I thought we were going to hear from Mr. Taylor. It might help if I called anyone. Welcome, Clifton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Clifton Taylor, Vice President of Northern California for Richland. Appreciate you hearing this matter tonight. Want to thank your staff for advancing this for us. They've been great to work with, specifically Marty, Charlene, Mark Collier and folks focusing on the development issues for the city. I am joined by Jack Bray, the founder and president of Richland tonight, and other members of our development team, Kate Harker, Land Use Council, and our community relations consultant, Jean Indicott, and Joseph Benson, who is, I don't know his official title, he, I believe is the dean of John Adams Academy currently. So we're here to talk and I will keep it brief. Let me just see how, I don't know how to run this.
That was the fastest one ever. Good job.
Are there questions?
Okay, so for, sorry about that. For background, Richland acquired the rivers in two thousand, in October two thousand twelve from IHP Groupie. They had been working on the project for a long time. Obviously, there was significant distress in the real estate market at that time. Richland came in and made the investment and have been working with staff to advance the project to where it's at today. There was a development agreement in place at that time, had a restriction for development of the twelve point three acre parcel 504 as a school. Ultimately, Washington Unified School District decided that they would not develop a school on that site. And it was the understanding of staff and the council that just because a Washington Unified publicly-funded school could not be placed there, that that did not necessarily mean that the council didn't desire to see other opportunities for public education to be incorporated in the project and meet the expectations of the rivers, who, residents that had been expecting a school to be developed in their site. So for background, this is the current parcel 504 configuration in the final map that Charlene referenced. It's approximately seven acres on the southern half of the former parcel 504. There's a water tank site labeled as Lot Three and Lot Two would be the second multifamily residential site located within the rivers' development. So the reason we're asking for the request is that after we obtained the council's extension of the development agreement and authorization to proceed with developing the northern five acres as residential, subject to the restriction, as Charlene mentioned, we uncovered that there was a contamination issue there. This, the three acres of the site was formerly a Yolo County Housing Authority project. Apparently, when they set their foundations, they put down a termiteicide called Chloridan that has now been banned by the EPA and requires extensive cleanup. And so that was uncovered after we had made our initial request and obviously significantly affected the timing and the ability to deliver the site. We also, through due diligence, realized that to meet the fire flow requirements for development of the school, the fire, the water tank would actually need to be constructed prior to occupancy. That project also was significantly more expensive than what had been identified in the city, CIP of four point two million dollars. The current estimate is roughly seven million dollars. And so with total capital improvements in excess of seven and a half million dollars to remediate the site and prepare the school, it obviously creates a totally different start-finish relationship than what we anticipated when we were here in August of two thousand fourteen. So working with staff, we identified things that we could do to hopefully put ourselves in the best position to make this request with you guys here tonight. That included entering into a voluntary site cleanup agreement with the Department of Toxic Substance Control, getting approval for remediation action work plan to remediate the site and allow occupancy as a school. We've completed some design on the water tank, specifically through second plan check on foundation plan submittal, so we can mobilize quickly into the development of the water tank. We've entered into deposit and funding agreement with the city for plan check and review and development of the water tank. We've processed our improvement plans and final map to the satisfaction of the city engineer. We've worked with city staff on getting all the public finance elements for the land secured finance mechanism, the development agreement, together through the finance department. And we've entered into a purchase and sale agreement with John Adams Academy to convey the site as a land dedication to them that includes, you know, when valuing the land, improvements, fee credits and mitigations that Richland's agreeing to do to facilitate the school site, a package of over four million dollars of private investment into that site to see that a school can be built there. So this is an example of a site plan. The last thing that we did was took and designed what we thought would be a campus that would circulate well based on what we had learned interacting with the charter school community and laid out a site and took it through your staff's preliminary development review process. process and got feedback that this configuration would be acceptable for, at a high level, and would generally be viewed as, as what the city would like to see from a campus development standpoint. And then we took that out to market and looked for charter school partners that would potentially work with us on the development of that site. So as part of that, we, we interviewed charter school partners, we toured schools, we did a very extensive research on who could take on this effort. And I think what's unique about what we're talking about doing here is that this would probably be one of the first times, if not the first, that something like this would be done, where charter schools traditionally have been funded through going into existing built facilities, getting short-term bridge loans, remodeling them for school purpose, using their average daily attendance revenue to pay lease payments and occupy the site through payment of a lease. This would actually be leveraging a stronger charter school that has a very good balance sheet and using those same operational revenues that they usually do to guarantee a lease to enter into a long-term lease-backed purchase agreement through a development partner and actually build a school from scratch, which I, maybe you guys have heard of, but in Northern California at least, I've not heard of, of that, of that occurring. And so I think from an investment standpoint in West Sacramento, this would definitely be something that would be very entrepreneurial. Background on John Adams, I'll cover, just to keep it brief for you guys here tonight, a bit of information about John Adams. If you want information about their organization, we, we'll have Joseph come up and answer any questions. It's charter school, tuition-free, open to all students. They opened their first campus in two thousand ten in Roseville. They're working on additional campuses in Lincoln and Alarola Hills right now. And obviously, the site in West Sacramento, they're credited by the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. Nonsecretarian, all-credentialed teachers, they do provide full special education services, publicly funded based upon enrollment. They're accountable to state and federal academic standards, meaning their students have to pass all the same standards that Washington Unified Students attending public school will be required to. They're subject to the authorizing district's oversight and annual independent financial audit requirements. They currently, they started their first year with an enrollment of five hundred and fifty-nine students in an office park in Roseville. They now have tenants of thirteen hundred students. They've actually purchased three or four buildings along Highway eighty in Roseville, including the former Heald College building that they turned into a high school. They developed a very impressive campus in a short amount of time. And the reputation that they've developed has led them to have a big waitlist of over eleven hundred students waiting to get on to, waiting to get on to the, waiting to get into the school. You know, one of the things that stood out to us in, in review, in meeting them and understanding their structure was how strong their financial position was and how their leadership had put them into being very financially competent. They have an investment grade rating with standards and ports that's allowed them to access the bond markets for financing their existing facilities and these new opportunities. They have more than two million in current net assets and reserves of eleven point four percent that they anticipate to grow over annually. For example, I believe, I don't know that schools actually are required to have a reserve requirement. I think certain schools that do requirement, I think their requirement is three percent. So an eleven percent reserve is a significant reserve over what a typical school would experience. And they've never had any, they've had a history of audits, but never any weaknesses identified, which made them a tremendous partner for us in attempting to do what, develop a school on, on this campus of this character. They have a very, you know, what we've found is that there's a lot of charter schools that are very much trying to mimic public schools and pull off students of, you know, various demographics and other geographies and operate. And John Adams is very much what I believe the charter mission was, which was to establish a charter that is unique in character and for a specific purpose and a specific education. And they have a very traditional liberal arts-style education based upon founding fathers and principles and reading. And, and so that was something that stood out to us, is that they had very much crafted something that was unique in the charter school space. And so I think that would be evidence in the architecture. The picture here is not meant to capture what would be built on the rivers. I think it captures the theming that they would be incorporating in the architectural standards that would be something very grand, that would capture the, the mission that they have established for themselves with columns and other features that would be a character that I think, you know, would be something special for the city of West Sacramento and obviously collaborating on architecture with the city, or with the staff and, and others to make certain that, you know, blended in with what West Sacramento is trying to develop here. So what we're essentially requesting is alleviation from the timing restriction that was put in place so that we can finance the roadway detention base and water tank improvements that are required to deliver the school site and components of the project that will allow for investments to be made to bring all of these things forward and would accelerate the school development. And I think, you know, I just made a couple of quick notes, since you guys were talking about budgets here tonight. You know, I think when we bought this project, it was obviously a project that you guys had put a lot of time into and had been sitting around for a while that hasn't been producing a return because of various conditions. And when we bought it, I believe most of the money went to the city actually to repay for the, for the, for the golf course property. And, you know, it's sitting there, it's not producing a return for you guys. I think there would be a twenty-five million dollar in private investment in schools on the seven acres based upon the campus development and the value of the land, things that we're doing. We still have to pay school fees to Washington Unified School District of around four million dollars. That's additional money that's going to flow into the system for them to be able to do things on their facilities. There's twenty-five million dollars of infrastructure that gets built to service the lots, other water tank, other elements of the project. There's thirty million in fees that go into parks, traffic, other improvements that are obviously things that help benefit the community. So that's eighty-five million dollars plus the direct benefits of housing. I think the, the Rivers is expected to produce, you know, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five million dollars of assessed value at build-out. And I think we're very much on the cusp of being able to pull, you know, with, with this action, pull a couple of projects together, they'll see that project advance, and hopefully that build-out as the vision that you set and you guys to get the return on the investment that you've obviously made over a number of years. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them, but that's my presentation.
Questions at this time? All right, thanks, Clifton.
Thank you.
And who's from, I'm sorry, who's from the academy? Were you going to make some, a presentation as well?
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. All right. We did have a couple of requests to speak as well. So let's go to those next, first is Corey Cummings.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, lady and gentleman of the council. My name is Corey Cummings, and I'm a lifelong resident of the Sacramento area, and more importantly, eight years in West Sacramento. And also, I've been a past president of the Rivers Community Association, president of Rivers Community Association. One of the things I want to talk about tonight was that long history that Clifton kind of made a mention to. In two thousand fourteen, when I got on the board, one of the first things we did was do a records request for some of the records for the history of what had gone on with the Rivers. And thank you to Clerk Rankin and her staff for answering all my responses. But we gathered tens of thousands of pages of documents, EIRs, planning documents, maps, deeds, easements, and a whole litany of public records from both Yolo County and the city, you know, council, and the planning commission, et cetera, because this thing goes back to nineteen eighty-two. And so after reviewing all those documents, you know, who knew community development was so complicated, right? So my point is that the Rivers has a long and circuitous development history. Conceptualized over three decades ago as a two hundred and seventy-nine acre mixed-use development with a six hundred slip marina, a golf course, fifteen hundred residential units, a five hundred room hotel and convention center complex, an office complex, and a retail center, the concept has changed over time. Right now, only four hundred and sixty-eight units have been built to date. Of those, three hundred and forty-eight units are part of the Rivers, and the other hundred and twenty are the Rivers senior apartment complex. The important thing here is that for the last twelve years, the small number of Rivers homeowners have been maintaining the private parks and streets and all of the public street landscaping, with significant proportion of which is also was supposed to be supported by the CFDM when that was established. But we are working with Phil Wright and Paul Bloomberg to try to resolve that issue. But it's important to note that you're only collecting fifty-eight percent of what the projected CFDM revenue was. In conclusion, I believe, as badly as I'd like to see a well-run, aesthetically pleasing charter school in the Rivers community, neither the developer nor the city can force this to happen. But after two years of working closely with Clifton on the board, I believe he has worked extremely hard trying to obtain a quality charter school for the community, as well as trying to resolve any of the other challenges associated with moving the development forward. I believe he has demonstrated that the seven acres is more than adequate for a well-functioning school. I believe that further delay of the Rivers, too, as planned, will create growing financial hardships, both for the association and the city. And I concur with the city's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Valerie Kiesler-Kaisler? Just like Gobalden. It always gets said twice in any possible way, so.
They both work. In the interest of time, I'll be, I'll be brief. I'm Valerie Kiesler. I've lived in West Sacramento over twenty years. I've worked in West Sacramento over fifteen years. I've lived in the river almost ten years. I've got two children of school age, and they both go to school in the city of Sacramento. And I very strongly support something like the charter school that Richland has proposed. And I, I also strongly support all of the residential development. Richland's been part of all of our community meetings. They have disclosed all of the statuses of all of the development, including any environmental issues. And I just wanted to say I strongly support it, as does our whole community. We want, we want the residential development and the school. And that's it.
All right, thank you. And David Reed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My wife and I, we have lived in the community with our family for now going on thirteen years. We were there from the beginning of the Rivers development, when Groupie was the master developer of the community. And I have to commend the council, the city of West Sacramento, on being so progressive in their development efforts throughout the city. It's an incredible city and a wonderful place to live. We moved here from Chico, and I work down, in downtown Sacramento. And it's been a great place to raise our children. And one of the things, though, that has been missing, and was one of the representations made by the original developer, was in fact the development of a school on the site. And we have many young families now that would be benefited by it. Certainly, the communities of Brighton-Broderick would, to have more educational choice for all of the families there to afford themselves of the opportunity of a charter school education. And the, the, the now-new master developer, Richland Communities, has been very conscientious in their approach to the community in seeking to complete the development of the rest of the residential units and lots on the site, in addition to the school. So I really encourage you to support this amendment to allow both of those things to go forward on a dual track expeditiously, so that we can have a new school in the community and really afford the, the larger community the opportunity that that, that entails. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so let's return to the council. Questions or discussion? I had one, maybe it's for, maybe it's for the, I'm, I'm a Hamilton guy, so I'm struggling with the John Adams, but it's fine. Maybe you could join us at the, I just had a question about the charter process. So how, how, under what, do you expect to achieve a charter from the local district or from the county or the state, or do you operate under a statewide charter or some other mechanism? How to?
No, we would apply for a charter at the Washington School District, Washington Unified.
And, and do you expect, I know they're not supportive of the, I mean, we, in our two-by-two, I should report that the council member Roscoe and I, as part of the city school two-by-two, this item came up at the request of the, the, the school board members who were present, so Trustee Kirby Gonzalez and Trustee Pizzotti. And they raised concerns about, about moving forward with an additional school, and a charter school in particular, as they have, as the district has, more or less, it's the beginning of this project, but they renewed those, those issues with us in the two-by-two, so I wanted to, so it didn't appear as though they would be instantly receptive. And I know the charter process is not totally discretionary on their, for them either, but I'm wondering if you could describe how you, how you think you'll get to the point where you have a working charter?
Well, we've reached out to the county already and are hoping to set up a meeting with them, to meet with the superintendent, to get to know the superintendent, and let them know that we're coming to the community. We plan to come to the community. And we've gone through the charter process in Roseville, in Lincoln, and in Algarado Hills, and we'll follow the same process in applying for a charter here in Washington Unified and hope to get, you know, it is, as long as we meet the state's standards, there isn't much discretion on the part of the school board if we meet those standards. We hope to obey some of that opposition by helping them understand who we are. But in the end, if there is, if, if we don't get approved at the district level, which we, we hope to be approved, you know, we can, we can always appeal to the county as well.
And what's the scale of the school? At, at full, at full operation and build-out, what's the enrollment that you're, that you are anticipating?
Here in, here at this site?
Yes.
We haven't built our plans yet for this site. Our, our typical model is a thirteen hundred student, a sixteen hundred student school. The challenge will be to see if we can make that work on that site, based on the size of the site. Typically do a, the, the, the design that you saw is a design that we're working on to put into Lincoln. It's a single-story model. We may have to do a two-story if we intend to make sixteen hundred students. But again, we have to determine in terms of traffic flows and all that, whether the sixteen hundred student model will work.
Thanks. Mr. Levesma?
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this project back in the presentation. Question, where's, the presentation on this? Oh, Clifton did. Well, there was a, in the staff report, there's a question around if this doesn't work out, if something doesn't happen, that there's been an offer to donate the seven acres to the city at no cost or credit. Is that true? That's why I'm.
Yeah.
It's on the base of the microphone at the, oh, there it is. Yeah, you're on.
Okay. We've worked very hard to deliver a charter school. There's obviously some challenges because, you know, it goes beyond what we can do. It goes into financing of, you know, bond financing for their development and other factors. We believe we've found a partner that has the highest likelihood of, of achieving that, and that's why we're here with them. And we've entered into a longer-term agreement that gives them a little bit of time to hopefully work through those challenges and be successful. Obviously, they have to get a charter, either through the local district or the county. And, you know, in doing so, what we recognize is that because that is not, we're not here with a guarantee that we can do that, that what we are willing to do is commit that site to public education use for, or other municipal use, I guess, if the city saw fit, under the same terms that we have offered it to them. If for some reason, you know, that, what we don't want is this to just become a, you know, we, we continue to chase and the city continues to chase something that can't be delivered. What we're saying is, we'll, you know, we'll retool and we'll provide that and collaborate in a way that allows it to become something that the city obviously can use as, as an asset. So, you know, Jack and I discussed this, and Charlene approached us with it, and we, we are willing to make that commitment.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I, I think that's kind of, I know you guys have been working hard at this, and the community has been asking for this, which is why we kept the, this timing in place. But it appears it's, you made the case, and I know. been part of the, having a public facility there, a school there has been part of the promise of the rivers for some time. So I appreciate the work you've been doing. And if this shouldn't work out, I just want to make sure we had, and I'm not sure what we would do with the seven acres there and how we would pay for anything there. But we would, you know, having a Plan B ready would be important to send a message to the community because I just don't want us to be stuck with, the city to be stuck with seven acres. Now, we're on the hook to build something there.
Yeah, I mean...
To fill the void. And anyway, so just...
I guess ostensibly if you guys took it and then for a period of time you pursued and were unable to develop it, you know, it has underlying approved zoning and the city could inventory it and it ultimately could become an asset for funding something else that you guys pursued. So I mean, I don't think that it's going to be an asset that's going to be a drag on it, but I do think there would be some public policy questions that would come up around it that you would need to deal with in the future. And I do appreciate you acknowledging that this is really a land use decision. And I think, you know, the reason we brought forward the school is that I just, as you all know me, I take a very open and honest approach to how we engage the community at the rivers and how we engage with you. And so I didn't, you know, we want to effectively take the Pepsi challenge on the actions that we're doing in the community and put ourselves out there and hopefully that resonates with you as us wanting to be a good stakeholder and a good participant here.
Sure. And while I did say that this is a land use decision and we're not necessarily voting on charter school, our friends are over at the district and there's a different dynamic there. They are interested in this. So I'm making sure that we approach that the right way, in a way that, again, that while the decision we may make here, and I'm supportive of this, I want to make sure that we, as you engage the district, it's with the right foot and the right intent. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Sandine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the work that you've been doing these past several years. It seems to me we have reached this point where we have to say, do we want to move forward or not because the water tank needs to get built in order to make even a school work there and the remediation that was uncovered that no one would have, I think, anticipated. So for me, I am supportive of this moving forward because I think it's time to get development back going in that neighborhood. And we did, we did put some constraints on, which I think you've challenged and addressed, and I'm comfortable with this proposal.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm comfortable with the proposal as well and view it as more of a land use decision at this point and allows the project to move forward. But maybe from Marie's perspective, so what would be the decision points that would come to us in terms of a school on that site or the use of the property?
I'll let Charlene go over. That would be the entire permit process in terms of design. I don't know in terms of a school, if our role in design of that. It's your area, Charlene.
Yes, so with respect to the school development, it is permitted by right on, within that zone. So a school is permitted by right. It does require design review. And so it will go through design review both with the rivers' homeowners' association as well as with the city's design review process. And so that's for development of the school. Should the school not go forward, the developer did propose the alternative, we as staff have not discussed what we would do with the seven acres if they couldn't attract, you know, get a school open for business there. And that's purposeful because we really want to stay focused on the school development. That has been your direction all along since 2006 or maybe even before. So that, if that happened, we would come back to you at that point that we knew that was happening. And we would come back to you after staff such as parks and public works and pretty much all the executive staff got together and talked about what could, what could happen on that seven acres and bring you back some options for that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so essentially it's just a design review and that would be it?
Design review and building permits, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm supportive of it, too. We made, we've made a lot of runs at this and the facts on the ground have also changed quite a few times. When we began this, this project and we wrote this development agreement with a completely different developer, with Groupie that included this provision, we were, I mean, what was occurring in the neighborhood and the direction, the trajectory of our local schools was different. And we were also working, we had been working with a particular set of charter school options in conjunction with UC Davis. And that, the school that we had been working on ended up instead located in a different location, a different part of the city. We kept at this as Richland came on board and they began working with a different charter school to meet the same, the same need. And as the district was starting to kind of right itself and turn itself around as well, and that school ultimately located somewhere else in the city as well, and the district has continued to improve. So the facts on the, if we were doing it again today, I don't know that frankly that we would have this condition in the development agreement, but we're not doing this today. And we did this a long time ago and a lot of people have done a lot of work and bought a lot of things and commissioned a lot of studies and spent a lot of time trying to make this project work. And so I think it is, it's appropriate that we follow through with the deal that we have and the deal that we've done and that everyone's done, you know, their due diligence on. But I do agree with the, I think the sentiment that's been raised here and that if it doesn't, if it can't work this time, then, you know, the door that Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Taylor have opened up in terms of, you know, what's next, I'd be open to as well if we're not able to accomplish it this time, after, after the full decade-plus of trying to make this, make this project happen. But it looks like a good school, good option, good plan, so hopefully we'll be able to get across the finish line. But I'm definitely supportive of lifting the timing restriction that we imposed in 2014.
All right, there's no further discussion. Is there a motion on the item?
I'll move the recommended action.
It's moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item's approved. Thank you. City, council calendar?
Good evening, mayor, city council members. There are a couple of items that you might be interested in coming up tomorrow. Starting at 11 is our Public Works barbecue out at the corp yard. The next Wednesday is the mayor's State of the City address in the Galleria.
Questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
Just briefly, mayor, there is a letter from Congresswoman Matsui and Congressman Lamafa from the northern part of the state in support of the port dredging effort. It went to the Corps of Engineers today to ask for the release of the remaining amount for the emergency dredging. Late today, we got notifications that headquarters did release those funds, so we have a fully-funded project. Now we have to deal with the deployment of that project, the issue of the delta smelt and so on. So we're not, we're not all the way there, but this was a big news today and definitely have a lot of gratitude to our member of Congress who really dogged this issue. So we're making progress.
Perfect. Questions? City manager? City attorney reports? Staff direction members of the council? We have no future agenda requests. So Mayor Protem Johansson moves and Councilmember Sandine second. The meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.